This is a regular meeting for the city council conducted by the committee of the whole on Monday, May 12, 2015. Mr. Fiverr?
Here.
Mr. Seymour?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Lamb?
Here.
Mr. Fraser?
Here.
Mr. Percasius?
Here.
Mr. Jordan?
Here.
And the seven members present. Thank you. We're going to make one adjustment in the agenda and that's going to be on the item number four, the first item on our agenda, and then we'll open the county violent crime case creature. And that is going to be on our, oh, two top.
All right. Good evening, City Council. Uh, City Clerk, City officials, and members of the community. I'm here this, this evening to ask for City Council's support for us to add an officer to a violent crime task force that is run by the FBI and that, and that focuses on Oakland County. So I want to start off by telling, uh, and advising Council and members of the community that we do not have a violent crime problem in Southfield. Um, in fact, over the last six years, we've seen an astounding sixty-six percent decrease in violent crimes in Southfield. And moreover, we've seen this decrease over seven consecutive years. It's something that a lot of communities around here cannot see. Um, and also, we do not have a gang problem in the city of Southfield. We have officers assigned to all three high schools in the city. And usually, when a community starts to see a gang problem and that affects itself in the high schools, our officers are highly trained to detect any type of gang-type activities in the schools and to take the appropriate action, and we're not seeing that. Um, the reason I want to assign an officer to this task force full-time is for us to be proactive in addressing these issues so that we don't, so that we can continue this downward trend in criminal activity in the city, and we can continue to send a message that we're very tough on crime, and we have a zero tolerance approach to crime in the city. And just, just to remind Council about some of the other task forces and outside units that we have our officers assigned to. Uh, we have, we have two officers assigned to a FBI Crimes Against Children's Task Force that focuses on human trafficking and adult and child prostitution. We have officers assigned to a Secret Service Financial Crime Task Force. Um, I have an officer assigned to the DEA Drug Task Force, and I have an officer assigned to an Oakland County Narcotics Task Force. Uh, this task force is a violent crime and gang task force, so that if we have any problems in the city, if anything starts to emerge, we can tap into the resources of federal, state, county, and other local agencies to resolve these issues. A very proactive, very aggressive approach to, to addressing issues that may emerge in the future. And so, I have with me this evening, um, the FBI agent who oversees this task force to give you a brief overview of what this task force involves and to visit it to Southfield. Um, and this is FBI Supervisory Senior Resident Agent Jeff Downey. And I'd like for him to come up and explain to Council a little bit about what this task force entails.
And could you give us your business address for the record, please?
Well, he's gonna have to shoot you.
Sure. Uh, good evening, Council, and thanks for having me here today. Uh, Chief, thank you for inviting me. I, I think it's important for, uh, members of Council to get an understanding of what the, uh, Oakland County Violent Crimes and Gang Task Force does and how it will benefit your community here in Southfield. Uh, our office is the Troy FBI Office located at fifty-six hundred Crooks Road in Troy.
Thank you.
Um, the task force was originally created in two thousand nine with a focus on violent gang crime in Pontiac, Michigan. Up until this time, that's been our main focus. Uh, about a year, a year and a half ago, we started to realize, uh, that the crime just isn't in Pontiac, uh, and there's violent crime throughout Oakland County, and as the name states, the Oakland County Violent Gang Task Force. Uh, so, our focus is changing from Pontiac. Uh, we're housed up in Pontiac now, um, but we are doing more of a focus county-wide. Uh, the FBI has a hundred and sixty State Street Task Forces around the country, uh, with over sixteen hundred, uh, task force officers and a thousand FBI agents, uh, that work on these task forces. By partnering with our state, local, and federal partners, as Chief Hawkins indicated, it's a great way to help prevent crime, uh, and when major crime occurs, for us to collectively come together and combat that crime. Uh, Southfield, uh, in the, when we look at geographically, we're Oakland County, Southfield is part of the Detroit City, partner of the task force, uh, based on your geographical location, uh, you know, we see a lot of gang crime or violent crime. Uh, I don't, I wanna use the term gang kinda loosely. Most of our gangs here in southeastern Michigan are neighborhood-based gangs. Uh, a lot of them are put together for crimes of opportunity. Uh, we define a gang as three or more people, uh, that are involved in an organized, in an organized, uh, activity to commit crime. Uh, so it doesn't mean that they're gonna have a name, the Bloods, or the Crips, uh, that you hear nationally, but it's three guys, girls coming together to commit an armed robbery of a store. Uh, if something were, it, just to highlight, I mean, most recently, the gang task force working in, uh, West Bloomfield on the Tapper's Jewelry Store robbery. Uh, so that's an example of, uh, a case recently that the gang task force is involved with. As you guys know from, you know, from media footage that's been on there, a group of individuals came to a store armed with guns, uh, it was very violent, and, you know, take over the store, uh, and it's something that the task force is, is, is working on. Uh, but the overall mission of the task force is to identify and target and prosecute violent street gangs and other violent crimes. Uh, we have a long-term and a short-term function. Our long-term function is to take a criminal organization, uh, you know, it may take us twelve months to investigate them with the idea that at the end of those twelve months, uh, we use sophisticated techniques to investigate these folks, uh, and kinda arrest them in mass. Uh, the other would be the more of the short-term cases. Uh, would be, an example would be a carjacking, uh, would be a, uh, commercial store robbery, uh, using guns. Uh, that would be another short-term. The task force is currently comprised of the Oakland County Sheriff's Office, Michigan State Police, Homeland Security Investigations, formerly known as ICE, Bloomfield Township Police Department, Michigan Department of Corrections and Patrol, uh, and Waterford Police Department, and the Auburn Hills Police Department. Um, in a nutshell, I mean, that's the, that's the concept of the task force. Uh, we welcome any questions that you guys have.
We do have two questions.
Sure. Um, most of the crime that ha, or a big percentage of the crime that happens in Southfield is not by Southfield residents, it's by Detroit residents?
Yes.
And what's the, what's the communication? This is my concern. Uh, we're putting manpower into something, but most of what happens here comes from the south, not from the north. So what is the communication with Detroit?
Well, great question. Um, we have, boundaries don't mean anything to the task force. Uh, so, a, a number of our cases that we have going on now, I can't get into specifics till we're, put us in Detroit. We actually do, end up doing a lot of work in the city of Detroit. Uh, the FBI also has two other gang task forces in the city of Detroit. Uh, this would be an avenue for intelligence sharing. Uh, you know, if it's something that we, or our task force up here doesn't decide to work, but it's affecting Southfield, um, we would partner with our task forces downtown to work that problem. Uh, but more than likely, the task force will just travel into, in Detroit and work what we need to work.
Okay, Mr. Moss?
Yeah, I think this is a question for the chief. Um, and as with other task forces that we've been participating with, can you explain, is, is somebody from our police department going to physically be elsewhere? Is this, this isn't gonna take an officer off the street? Is this, how is this gonna affect personnel within our own police department, um, in participating in the task force?
And, uh, yes, um, an officer will be taken from our department and, and physically full-time placed in this task force, just like a lot of the other task forces that we're involved in. However, uh, we've done some, some restructuring. Um, I've done some reorganization, reorganizing, um, and, and this will not affect service delivery in the city of Southfield. In fact, uh, we've, we've done some things, um, to increase the number of officers that we have on the street, and to increase, um, traffic enforcement and, um, and visibility that, that people in the community's been asking for. So this, this won't, this won't affect, uh, those, those, that mission at all.
All right. Mr. Percasius?
Yes, I, um, years ago, Mayor Jackson in Atlanta was having gang troubles, and, and he was trying to get the mayors to, uh, support some kind of, of legislation where, where gang groups would be prosecuted as terrorists. And, and so, my question is, how are gangs presently defined, and if they are defined and caused, how are they prosecuted under what definition?
Uh, well, gangs are defined as a group of three or more individuals, uh, is how the gang is defined. Uh, they don't always have to have a specific name to them. Uh, there's a number of ways that we look at prosecuting them, um, where we try to either run through the US Attorney's Office federally, uh, they could be brought up on racketeering charges, uh, continuing criminal enterprise. Um, we'll target a, a violent group any way we can. If they're involved in narcotics distribution, uh, we'll go after them for narcotics distribution. If they're involved in armed robberies, we'll investigate the armed robberies, conduct their violations, and try to prosecute them based on that.
The, uh...
But we don't charge, we don't, they do not charge them as terrorist groups.
Back then, back then, you know, terrorists were not defined as, looked at today, but it was starting, and I guess that's, that's what he was trying to get some legislation, which would be easier to prosecute them than what it was in Atlanta at that particular time.
Right.
And, uh, and that's why I asked the question of how we're prosecuting them, because, you know, if they lay out an area, and they control an area, you know about it, I'm sure.
Right, right.
Uh, and then what does the task force do in that case? And is this group that our officer's involved in, this task force, would they be investigating that territory, or?
They would.
Or, or anything that happens within that territory?
Like I mentioned, there, there's two components. It's the gang and violent crimes task force, so there's two components to the task force. The first component is the long-term investigations, where we try to dismantle that entire group of individuals, whether it be ten, twenty, fifteen people. Um, you know, we try to look at it from an conspiracy standpoint, uh, and try to, uh, follow at one time. From the short-term violent crime perspective, so let's say, uh, take for example, Southfield had a, uh, an armed robbery, a violent armed robbery of, of a gas station. Um, Chief, you call and say, listen, you know, we need, we would like to have the task force's resources down here, uh, we think it's connected to something bigger, um, we will bring the task force down, uh, and we'll start working that case, um, with its detectives, uh, maybe turn it over to the task force depending on what his decisions are, uh, but we will bring all of our resources to bear, uh, to investigate that crime.
Do gangs still mark off their territory with...
Yep.
...the thing?
Yes, sir. Some do, and, uh, some don't. Uh, some have gotten smart to the concept of, uh, marking their areas, some have gotten smart for not wearing, uh, the same clothing, uh, so not to be, uh, associated with the gang, uh, but they, they continue, uh, whether it's through social media, or just tagging stuff on, uh, buildings, um, they still do that, yes.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Yes, um, I imagine that there's, uh, specific training, or special training for people in, in this task force, uh, 'cause I'm sure that the gang, no two gangs are exactly alike, and, uh, what kind of training do these task force folks, uh, go through?
Um, well, we have a, actually, just started this year, we have a task force, uh, onboarding training that the FBI puts on, uh, and we also send them to various other, uh, gang-related and violent crime-related task forces. Uh, last year, we sent a number of guys out to the National Gang Conference, and that was some really good ideas, some of which we implemented in the area, um, on how to investigate some of these cases. Uh, so yes, training is available. Uh, I think one of the things that, uh, when people are assigned to this task force, uh, they're gonna be exposed to some different ways of, of looking at cases. Uh, so I always tell, and I think I told this to Chief Hawkins, when that detective comes back to him, uh, he's gonna have a couple extra tools in his toolbox, other things to think about, uh, when he's, you know, back, uh, in the detective bureau or moving up the ladder. I think the nice thing about partnering with a bunch of different agencies is you start to learn from your counterparts, uh, different ways to do things. Uh, so I, I think the long-term development, um, is always the, the benefit to the task force, from being on the task force, too.
Again, uh, and you, you mentioned the Crips and the Bloods, who have been in business for a long time, and I think their organization probably is, uh, a lot more sophisticated than, uh, maybe three, three people that have, you know, opportunists, they see a gas station, you know, they just get together and say, let's go rob this gas station, 'cause we need money for drugs or... Um, so that would be a, a case of opportunity and, you know, the, the folks being there. By just saying, a gang is, uh, is identified as three or more people, um, you know, and I, I know you have to have some kind of definition, but just three people, how do you train for something like that when it's, what, a crime of opportunity?
So typically, the guys that are involved in those robberies typically just don't go out and do one, just the way they're out, and they're, they're pumped into it, typically they're involved in more other violent crimes, uh, they're involved more. And we choose the example of, of an armed robbery, but yeah, typically they're involved in more than just that one. Um, so that's more of a short-term reactive. If it's a longer-term gang, and we have, you know, enough words of twenty-five gangs that have been identified in the county itself, that we are, um, and those are more long-term, those are, they're not easier to work, but you, you know, it's more of a defined group, if you will. Well, you know, we kinda have to, when we look at these groups, look at what the task force's mission, and we have to define it in some way. You know, there's no need for us to go out and every, you know, a single guy going to rob a store, I mean, it's really more organized groups that take a little long-term investigative approach, uh, and that's what, what the strength of the task force is.
Now, for the communities that haven't donated an officer to your task force, and they have a problem, how do you deal with that? I mean, again, do you, do they have to come up with some financial support, uh, for your task force, or?
Nope. Uh, we, we will assist, um, you know, other, uh, departments that need assistance. Um, you know, obviously, the, the department that have full-time bodies on, um, you know, it'd be, they'll be, their service will, but they're more frequently than others, um, but, you know, the, the task force, as we grow outside of the Pontiac area, uh, is, is the focus is to reduce crime, violent crime, uh, in Oakland County with our partnering law enforcement agencies that are after, are doing it. But, you know, these guys, you know, if they do something in Southfield, you know, they're, they're moving into Detroit, they're moving into, they, they move to different areas. So, um, it, it just takes, to answer your question, you know, just, we're not gonna not go to another city and work the case, uh, because we don't have somebody on the task force.
What, what's the value of putting somebody on the task force, or are they gonna come and solve their crimes anyhow?
Well, I, I want the chief to make that decision. And you're right, Mr. Fraser, you know, other cities will get serviced by this, but the benefit to us is, um, for us to be linked with the larger, um, law enforcement community. What we're saying is that, um, these, um, criminal activity now is, um, is, is a network of, of individual groups and, and sophisticated individuals who are out there doing things. And, and, uh, the contemporary way of policing now is to have officers from, from an agency who are linked with other agencies. You know, not being linked exposes us. So that's why, that's why we have these officers and all these different types of task forces, so we can share information, collaborate. Um, so if we have an issue with financial crimes, you know, we can immediately have, have the, have access of federal and state and, and county resources to address those. Um, you know, we, we really, we've gotta collaborate a lot more than we have, and, and this, this, this gives us access, uh, to the overall law enforcement. So, so we're not operating in a vacuum when we resolve some of these issues.
Okay, but, but let's say that a community that's not donating an officer has some financial, um, problems, you know, people are, are white-collar crime, getting, but aren't, isn't the task force gonna go over there and work on their problems, too?
Well, probably, but, but, but not necessarily. But by us having an officer in these various task forces, if we have a, a sophisticated network of individuals who are doing financial crimes, um, we can immediately tap into this financial crimes task force and have those, those, uh, those officers from those various agencies come and help us out and, and resolve these issues. If we have a violent crime, and, um, you know, we, and we need some resources from the federal government, or, or the state, we can immediately do that.
I understand. What I, what I'm trying to get at is, you get something for something, but it sounds like people are giving something for nothing. By not, by not having one of their, not either financially contributing to the, to the, the cost of the, of the task force, or not, uh, having a, a head count that's involved at task force, and if something happens in their community, you guys are gonna be like long rangers and show up and...
Our, our biggest, our biggest focus, maybe I should... Most of our work is done in the cities that we have our task force partners with, but a lot of these crimes, while they may, for example, may happen in Pontiac, it doesn't mean they haven't done one in Troy. So there are occasions where we have to go and investigate that crime that happened in Troy that's really, is the group that we're looking at. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We're not looking...
That's the question I'm asking.
Okay. To answer your question, we're not looking for work in other cities, um, just to do work in other cities. A lot of times, our focus of our duties are spilling over, uh, into these other cities that requires us to work in those cities.
Yeah, I, I know you wouldn't work in those cities because you wouldn't, you know, 'cause they don't have a, a, a financial investment. But if something happens in Troy, you're gonna go over there in Troy, because it's also part of the same gang, perhaps, that you're working in Pontiac, or Southfield, or a city that has, and that's what I'm saying. Why doesn't everybody either have to pony up some money, or, uh, to offset the cost of keeping the task force going, or?
See, I understand the, the cost perspective. The task force is funded by, um, the FBI. Um, so we, we fund the overtime, uh, for the officer that's assigned to the task force, um, provide a vehicle, uh, to the task force officer, uh, and fuel for that vehicle. So, from a cost perspective, other than, and I realize, putting an officer on the task force, you're taking somebody from one area, putting them somewhere else. The long-term benefit, or the, actually, the short-term benefit is, when you have a violent crime in your city, you now have a, a big force multiplier that comes along with it. Um, and we have, um, phenomenal intelligence, uh, between our task force here and our Detroit task force, um, for us to solve these crimes, uh, especially the short-term ones, at a, at a foot pace. Um, that's the goal. I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, and I understand what you're saying. Frankly, I'd like to go out to every city and say, here, we'd love to be partners with you, could you put them on the task force? Right now, we are, um, you know, I've told you, it's a relatively new task force, it started in two thousand nine, and we have initial focus of it. Looking down, uh, and looking at the geographic area here, one of our biggest partners, and I was surprised wasn't on it, was Southfield. Um, you know, geographically, we're located, um, we have a lot of spillover crime that comes from other areas at times, uh, and it, it just makes sense to be partnering with Southfield, and I truly appreciate, uh, Chief Hawkins, uh, for, for willing to listen, uh, and, and, and be part of, uh, the task force. I, I think it, I think it'll be a benefit to, to you and your community.
Yeah, I, I wanna be clear. I'm supportive of the task force.
No, no.
I'm supportive of Chief Hawkins donating a person, just wanna make sure that we aren't taking somebody away from our, our force, and...
Absolutely, absolutely.
...to the benefit of another, another community that's in.
Yeah, I think you should look at it as a force multiplier. Uh, the one thing that we are gonna do, uh, with this new officer, uh, when they get assigned, is really sit down and, and look at some of the, the major, uh, issues that, um, that could be more attention brought to them, um, and that, that task force, we'll be spending a lot of time here in Southfield, because it's our goal to increase, like I said, we've spent a lot up in the northern part of the county, now it's time to increase our intelligence base more here, uh, and we're gonna do some stuff with our folks downtown, uh, to do that.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Mr. Lamb? Mr. Lamb?
In the past few years, we had a Oakland County Drug Task Force. Do you know if that's still active, Chief?
Uh, yes, yes, sir. In, in fact, we have officers assigned to the task force.
Now, are you assigned to that, they consisted of chiefs only that time? Who were they consisted of today?
Um, well, uh, two different things. Um, we have the, uh, task force of officers, um, that you referred to first, and we have an officer assigned there, um, but there is a, a consortium of chiefs who meet, yes, who meet.
I think that's the one I'm...
Yes, and yes, I'm a part of that.
Yes. And they used to get the chiefs all together, and they would raid the drug houses, and sometimes, by the time they got down there, the drug house was empty. And then another time, when, uh, conditions were different, they did catch all of them. Uh, I just wanted to know if it's still active.
Uh, no, sir, that's not active. Right now, the, um, the chief consortium focuses on vision, um, the, the mission of, of, of the, um, of the whole consortium, and, um, making sure that, um, the agencies themselves are communicating and sharing resources and, and, um, and sharing ideas. So the technical, technical piece of it, the chiefs are, are not, uh, participating in right now.
So why not? What happened?
Um, because we, uh, the officers are much more highly trained, and much, 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 uh, able, much, much more adept at doing that than...
I would agree with you.
But I agree with it. Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mayor Moss? I just heard, uh, something else that kind of supports my concern. How many officers do we have assigned out on task force?
Uh, right now, I have, um, one, two, I have three assigned full-time and two part-time. And so this will be the fourth officer assigned full-time to a task force.
Um, so make me understand, so there's a task force for Wayne County, am I correct? The gang task force for Wayne County?
Yes, ma'am, there's actually two of them.
Okay. So you mentioned that Wayne County and Oakland County will be working together.
We do work together, yep. We communicate with each other, we share intel, yes.
So when you say work together, there's a gang issue, will your task force be dispatched to Detroit?
No. Our focus is Oakland County. However, when we have a group, uh, of violent criminals that come into Oakland and commit violent crimes, we'll take that case and we'll continue to work it, even take it in Detroit together.
Okay. So, so my question is, all of the border cities, let's say, um, you know, things like Wilmington Hills, you have, uh, all these cities, Oak Park, and others, are, are any of them contributing an officer to this task force?
Mayor, be very candid, I have an approach like that. Um, I came to Chief Hawkins, um, because I, I think, once again, we're located, I think it makes sense, um, when you look at, uh, some of the statistics, um, you know, relative to crime in, in, in Southfield, they've done a wonderful job of reducing crime, you know, lower crime rate, but based on your size per capita and stuff like that, it just makes sense that we partner with Southfield. Uh, but my goal is, at some point in time, to start to talk to some of the other border communities also.
So let's talk about Pontiac. Does Pontiac, Pontiac doesn't have a police department anymore, so does the sheriff's department, or, uh, any of the neighboring communities around Pontiac, are you, are there any officers being offered to the task force?
Absolutely. Um, a prime example is, uh, Bloomfield Township.
Okay.
Uh, they have a full-time officer assigned to the task force.
Okay.
Uh, did you know they're just out of Pontiac?
Right.
Uh, but they're, they're dedicated, uh, partner in, in it, and, uh, much like we've discussed here today, um, you know, that crime travels through their community, um, doesn't always take place in their community, um, but, uh, you know, in order to, and as this, this chief said, in order for us to combat this, then to be able to work together in partnership and share intelligence and, and all that thing, is what makes it successful.
So how many others, how many officers do you have assigned from other cities currently?
Well, total, including federally, just that, we're at about...
I don't want the federal, the top communities.
Uh, community one, two...
Six, six communities.
Six communities.
I, I share with my colleagues, I, I, I get it, I understand the support, but when I look at it as being the mayor of the city where my taxes are, are considered not competitive with other communities, uh, we just went through negotiation with our police department about hiring and the whole nine yards, and then to say we're gonna take an officer off the road, um, for a task force, that's something that I would support, although... an officer off the road for a task force that, something that I would support, although I would say the chief is better qualified, but I have not seen the typical gang violence that I perceive as gang violence as being a major issue in our city for crime. I'm concerned about the staffing of our police department. I'm concerned that it's not equal throughout the county. You did mention that a car will be given, so our police, our taxpayer's police car that we have would not be going towards the task force, correct?
Correct. The vehicle is involved, yes.
Now, should we come to the other task force, our car was still being used?
No, no, yes.
The one that you just, we just did, the one for the...
The Secret Service task force?
Yes.
No, they provide a car also.
I was interested that we drive our cars there, and then if they had to leave to go out, something would be covered. But our car is actually parked, and we're driving our police car there.
No, no. We are driving, that officer assigned to that task force has the vehicle assigned from the Secret Service full-time. So that officer...
So our car is not going?
Correct. Our car is not being used for that task force.
What about training, any equipment and all those things that would be needed above what we provide? Who's absorbing the cost of that?
We would absorb the cost of any normal training that an officer would receive here. And as Agent Downey mentioned, they have some special training for the task force officers, and that's the training that the federal government would absorb. But we still have, every year, there's training that our officers have to go through, and they will continue to do that, even, you know, firearms training, defensive tactics, driving training, they'll still do those things, and we'll handle that. Anything associated with the task force, the federal government.
How long is this agreement for?
And it's, there's no, there's no time period involved in it. Typically, what we do is every three years or so, three to four years, we rotate our officers out of these assignments.
How do you pick your officers to do that?
We have a panel comprised of command officers in the area where they will, who will oversee them in our department, as well as a representative from the FBI would be on there as well.
So is this like you advertising that the officers volunteer?
Yes, we'll have an internal posting, and there'll be some minimum qual, you know, you have to have at least five years on the department or something like that, and whatever qualifications, and whoever meets those qualifications can put in for their term. And then this panel would make the decision on, if they were interviewing, there would be a ranked list, and the person who finished first would get the offer first.
Is it, wasn't there a task force on human trafficking? Do we, we have an officer assigned to that as well, right?
Yes, ma'am, we have two. We have two assigned part-time to that.
And I know that's an issue.
And you know, if that's may add, I can hear your concern, I can hear Councilman Frazier's concerns, and we thought long and hard about this. Anytime we assign officers out, I have to make a decision about the added value of having this officer outside our department. And that's why, when I, because I explained to Mr. Moss, you know, we, first of all, we had to make sure that we reorganized within our departments so we could accommodate this. And as you know, we have fewer officers, but we've done that. We've made some other changes, where we can put some additional officers on the street and do some additional things. We're much more flexible and agile now than we were over the last three or four years just by making these changes. So if we have some type of issues that are emerging, we can quickly put together a team of officers internally to address these issues. Now, I can't, I can't overstate the importance in contemporary law enforcement of having local agencies who are connected to the overall law enforcement community. You get lost if you're not. And then you start to see issues to emerge. I talked about the sixty-six, and you know it well, the sixty-six percent decrease in violent crime that we've seen over the last seven years. A lot of things that we're putting in place right now are to continue pushing that trend out. We can't, we can't sit back and say, "Wow, we made it." You know, this is good. We've got to look at emerging trends, we've got to look at what are the best practices in law enforcement. And right now, best practices in law enforcement, contemporary law enforcement tell us that we have got to connect with the overall law enforcement community, and that's what, you know, I was glad that Agent Downey came to us and offered us this excellent opportunity to partner with. I tell you, Mayor, you know, when we have, if some issues start to emerge, we can put some people to that internally to do it, but we also have this gentleman here and his team that can help us do that. You know, we've got to, you know, we've got to continue to be proactive in addressing these issues. You know, these criminal enterprises are getting more and more sophisticated.
My last question is, what is our flexibility if we saw an issue with staffing that we would be able to end or pull our officer back?
Anytime, anytime, we can pull the officer out.
So it's up to the discretion of the council or the chief?
Yes.
Chief Hawkins, I do support this, and I'll tell you why. If we think that we live on an island, we're seeing ourselves, and all you have to do is watch the night news and see what's going on. I don't care, I mean, what the distinction is between violent crime, any crime can become a violent crime at any time. And I think if we're not interconnected with other law enforcement groups, we're not being realistic, because we're not an island. We're connected in so many ways to other communities. Work, we work in other communities, people work in our communities, so many ways. To me, this is, you know, a no-brainer. We have to do it. I think it makes perfect sense. Why wouldn't we want to interface and work with these other people and have this availability? It's just common sense to me. I don't get it that anybody would even do it. I think it's essential, and I think it's proactive, and I'm totally in support of it. I'll speak to them.
I just want to say this, that, as you don't get that, you know, this is not something new in Southfield. And when Chief Hawkins was here, you know, we used to have an intelligence division which worked with not only the FBI, but the Canadian government. And they worked on gangs at that time, drug lords and all that stuff. And matter of fact, they had a Vietnam situation in Northland, and they infiltrated the group with cameras and all that stuff. And so it is a great thing to have. It worked out real well in the city at that time, and I think it prevented bad situations to occur here. And I think when you do preventive things, then your city is better because of it. And I am a full supporter of this, please, that what, I used to own the Maude Squad, they just, I think, five guys, Simmons was on that team, and these guys, they left the beard, and I mean, it looked like they probably arrested for negligence. But anyways, they did a lot of things. Matter of fact, they raided a place in our town, and one of the guys who was involved with the city was an FBI guy, he got shot through the cheek, and we had him here representing him with a certificate at that time that was an U-Bus. So, you know, we've been through this, and I think it's very important that we participate.
Just, as the council goes through the budget process, at the last meeting, I made a statement that we would be looking at certain things under the microscope. June sixteenth is our budget adoption date, but this may be an area where we want to come back and take a more intense look. And then essentially, what I'm doing is we've got four full-time officers dedicated to task force and two part-time, for the equivalent of five people. The administration would like to work with the police chief and his senior managers to come back. And there's been a lot of discussion in December, council approved a staffing and signing for the police department, but perhaps we need to take a staff, a step back and look at the resource allocation. I think we all recognize the value in these task forces and that, but there's probably a whole lot of task force staff that we may not have the manpower to be on, so we need to choose wisely which ones make sense for Southfield and what's happening in, within our region. So I'll make that pledge, that we'll work with the PD, and sometime between now and September thirtieth, that will be one of our focuses, with the discussion about staffing, tasks to be performed, putting something that we could come back and do an hour, hour-and-a-half presentation with council.
So this isn't something that they spend all of the time on, is it?
Yes.
All of it? Full-time, but I mean, does it take seven days a week or five days a week?
It's a regular forty-hour week.
Okay. But they're available, I still think it's a good idea, because...
No, they're not.
Let me finish. I think that...
I was...
I think, I think, I think, Chief Hawkins, that you have to be the one that makes the decision about where, where people are most needed. I mean, in terms of how you manage your own people. I'm not saying that we aren't going to have, I'm not taking anything away from what Mr. Zorn said in that study, but you have to be the person that decides, we see what we don't see. We see the headlines, we see the TV news, we see all of these things. If they're needed full-time, if there's that need, then we should do it. You know what I'm saying? If that's, and I think for this, there definitely is a need, there's no question in my mind.
So just a recap, Chief, there's nine minutes of officer, we're not expecting certain people to be in our task force. We don't have problems with gangs in the city of Southfield. There's no increase in violent crimes in the city of Southfield. Well, staffing this person or assigning this individual will provide additional resources to our city. So at this point, why don't you go for a consensus, we'll start. Mr. Lance, would you say yes or no in moving forward and giving the chief authority to assign an individual to the...
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Moore? I have to say it, I agree with Councilwoman Seymour, so yes.
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah. I just agree.
And just for the record, I would like to say, I understand the importance of this, this is some of the adamant about looking at the overall impact that this is going to do. I understand what you're doing. I don't want it to become an issue, but I will always be looking at the bottom line of budget.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the auto presentation.
Yes, we have representatives of the West Old Town, we have presented our fiscal year and area, and we have copies of the audit, as well as the OMB one thirty-three federal supplement. Yeah, can we pin it out? The audit can also be found online. It has been online since, I believe, February twenty-second. And, Madam President, I'm going to turn it over to our representative from Flatland, let me get this out. But I think we've put them on everybody's spot here. Okay, so everybody up there will sit down. Everybody, when you are, we're ready. Okay. Good afternoon, just barely, it's almost even. For the record, my name's Los Polver, one of the co-partners supervising the audit, with me is Alicia Davis, one of our managers, who's worked on the audit for several years and really knows the city inside and out, and was almost, I think, like, you know, one of Mr. Sharet's many right hands, and I think also helping Mr. Zorn quite a bit. So there's some deliverables, but we'd like to use this PowerPoint that we put with each of you to focus our presentation. We've already gone over this in substantial detail with the finance committee. So for the committee as a whole, we still think we'd like to have an audience with you so that you have any opportunity to ask us any questions you'd like. But we will try to keep it at a higher level since we went over it in detail with the finance committee, but try to be responsive to any questions you've got. So on the first page, just to kind of mention what the deliverables are, I think you all know, because you've all been here before, the financial statements are the responsibility and the property of the city. The CAFR, which, hello, is that what you're handing out, CAFR? The CAFR is the acronym, C A F R, stands for Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. That represents all the hard work that your financial staff does all throughout the year. We come in after the year is over, and we do a variety of tests and procedures, and then we express our opinion with regard to the accuracy and the integrity of the financial statement. So our deliverable is about a two- or three-page document out of that almost two-hundred-page document representing the city's CAFR. In addition, we've issued a report on internal control and compliance. Because you get federal monies, you have to have, in addition to your audit of the CAFR, which is required by state law, federal law requires that you have a compliance audit because you get federal grant money from the United States government. So there's a report on internal control and compliance, our audit findings, observations, and then also some other recommendations. And then the single audit report, again, which ties together that several compliance audits. Our auditor's opinion, our audit opinion, it does kind of restate the facts that the management of the city is responsible for the financial statement. Our responsibility is to perform an audit and express our opinion on the financial statement. It's on page two? Oh, I am sorry, yeah, I'm on page two now. It's on page two of the CAFR though, because of the other stuff here ahead of us. So in our opinion, we had an emphasis of matter, just a couple of things that we call your attention to. There was a change in how the retiree healthcare obligations were calculated, and a change in the reporting entity due to GASB. GASB is an acronym, stands for Government Accounting Standards Board, Statement Number Sixty-One. And that, you know, defined who's included in the financial statement and how they're included and so on. Because I think, as you know, in addition to the city, there's other separate organizations, you know, housing, the Downtown Development Authority, and so on, you know, which are sort of under the city's umbrella but not under your direct control. So that statement redefined, you know, what's included. On page three of this PowerPoint, we talked about our communication. Before the audit, we kind of told you what our game plan was and what we expected for timing. We were not able to get the audit done in accordance with the original scope and timing, you know, because of the difficulty of getting some financial information with the tragic passing of Mr. Sharet, that certainly, you know, threw a wrench, you know, into the whole process. The city staff worked hard, and we were finally able to get the audit report done in February. Our audit includes three phases, the planning and preliminary information, which we did in July and August, immediately after the end of the fiscal year, risk assessment right after that, September and October, and then what we not very creatively call the rest of our audit procedures, you know, which should have been done October through December, it really took October through February. And then the single audit report was finalized a month after that. Alicia's going to cover, just briefly, the, some of the findings.
Good evening, everyone. So we would have a total of five findings on the financial statement audit, and what that really represents is items that would seem, that would seem to be internal controlled efficiencies that are significant enough to warrant attention of the task force. So the first one, you know, we've come here before and said, you know, we failed in the audit, or we had to propose corrections, and so there are outcomes to things that are occurring in the finance department. And what we really focused on this year is what's the source of the problem, what's the root of the problem? Not what are the symptoms of the outcome, what's the root of the problem? And at the end of the day, we really think that there's not enough, there's not sufficient resources in the finance department. Some of that certainly has to do with folks being in dual roles, such as the dual role that Mr. Sharet plays, the dual role that Mr. Pierce plays, and then also just with the downsizing that's occurred. And so at the end of the day, we think that really has led to a lot of the issues that have come up in the task force audit. The second item, we have talked about year over year, and we'll continue to talk about, the risk that exists when you lack segregation of duties. So you have certain duties that's been the financial world, cash, you know, cash receiving world, that just are not compatible from a risk perspective, and we know you're aware of that. You know, it's kind of the risk and reward for having more people versus less people, and some of the tactical decisions that the city's had to make. But because it is a risk, we do have to keep reminding you of that. But because it is a risk, we do have to keep reminding you of that. The third item would relate to cash, internal controls over cash in the Treasurers Department. And we've talked about this a lot over the years, and, you know, it's good to be up here and say, you know what, we've seen a lot of progress. We have seen a lot of internal controls be put in place. We don't think you're all the way there yet, so we have made some additional recommendations in terms of ways that we think you can really get where we'd like to be fully. And we have talked about those at length with management. On page five, at the top there is the fourth finding on the financial statement audit, and this relates to systems and processes in place over preparing that large CAFR that Hanan handed out. Clearly, there's a lot that goes into it, and so we have some recommendations around some components of that that are not as formalized as others and as formalized as we'd like to see. And again, we've talked about that length with management, and as I stand here today, I know that Jim and Hanan have made a lot of those changes already, so we look forward to being able to come up here next year and hopefully say that these are not issues. And then the last item has to do with the VIBA trust. This ties into another recommendation that we make later on in the package where many of costs that affect the citywide, different departments, go through like a central cost share analization. So maybe, you know, the general fund pays all the bills and then billed everyone for their part. The way that's normally done is based on budget or an estimate, so I think this is what it's going to cost everyone, including the retirement system, including the retired healthcare fund. And that's okay, that's fine to estimate those. What needs to happen, though, when you have a system that you estimate is you have to compare them at the end of the year to what the actual costs were, to make sure that you didn't over undercharge different segments of the city. That's particularly important when you have a trust fund that is restricted for use. So what happened in the year that we just added, fiscal 2013, relative to the charges that affected the VIBA retiree healthcare, they were overcharged by $171,000. And so that becomes a compliance issue beyond just a cost issue, because legally, those funds can only be spent on that. So we have talked extensively about different ways that you could, you know, implement a tru- process or settlement process to make sure that you really end up at the end of the year where you ought to be.
Those, especially the first three items, I think, kind of deviate slightly from the script. You know, I helped the city with its recent arbitrations, and over the years, we've talked about it. You know, over the past more than five years, I know the city has very carefully watched its expenditures, and it basically had a higher increase. And so, I know that Mr. Sharet was very proud that any staffing reductions were done through attrition, there's no layoffs at the city, and the city's been very proud of that. And, but with the attrition and then not replacing people, we think the first three items that Alicia mentioned are kind of symptoms of that. You know, you cut through the fat, you cut through the muscle, and now you're chopping away at the bone. I mean, you reduced your staff to the point where many people are wearing several hats and they're really, really stretched thin. And I think that results, you know, with that lack of segregation of duties and just not being able to get the job done as well as they're capable of doing, just because they're really stretched thin. So we're concerned you've gotten to the point where, you know, you've cut it as far as you really can. Getting back on that, on to page six, you know, again, these are all specific things, these bullets are all things that appear in that letter that we give you. We have to sort of cite the item and then indicate whether there is or is not a problem. So there were no transactions entered into in the year which there's a lack of authoritative guidance. Governmental accounting has pretty well established rules, and so there were no items where they were unusual and you didn't have guidance. No significant transactions that are in the wrong period, other than, again, the restatement and the recalculation of the retiree healthcare or the, which is the OPEP, Other Post-Employment Benefit Liability. So that was caught up and, you know, true up. On page seven of the PowerPoint, we talked about implementing GASB 61, so the nonprofit housing commission was taken out of the city's CAFR because it no longer meets the criteria. The housing commission didn't change, the criteria changed, so that's not in there anymore. The Section Eight Housing Commission and the Southfield Growth Corporation are no longer combined with the governmental funds, rather they're recorded separately as component units. In the financial statements in the financial record, many things are based on, you get a cash receipt, you get a check, you get an invoice, you pay a bill, but there are many other things that require estimates. And so, we just need to make you aware of those things that require estimates, like pension and other post-employment benefit costs. There's, there are, you know, dozens of actuarial assumptions. How long are people going to live? How much, is the retirement system going to be able to earn on its investments? What's healthcare inflation going to be? And so on and so on. So there's a lot of estimates in there. Self-insured workers' comp and health benefits and other claims and so forth. Again, the city works with a third-party administrator to try to estimate those things because some of those aren't filed and come to fruition for years, so it requires estimation. Property tax appeals liabilities, the last several years have really been unprecedented. The city attorney and the special councils you work with for property taxes assist the city in formulating judgment as to what potential liabilities might be for Michigan Tax Tribunal. Again, those things take several years to, you know, be settled and so forth. So along the way, you've got some expert judgment, you know, we review those. The valuation of alternative investments held by the pension system and the retiree healthcare trust. This is an old, old investment. I think the city had it before, before Mr. Lilmer was president. And he has gotten into it, he's, works with your investment counselors, and he has a handle on it, he's protecting the city as well as he can to make sure you get the most you can out of those investments, but they're alternative investments. It's not just a stock or a bond that you can look up on the, in the Wall Street Journal and see what it's worth, but sort of value those investments takes judgment and monitoring that's happened. We review all the city's systems and the estimates that it makes, and we concur with how they're doing it, and it's consistent with how other local governments are making those same estimates. Difficulties encountered in performing the audit? So we had no difficulties dealing with management, other than being able to get the information which caused the audit to be late, as we've talked about. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements, it's normal that, you know, during our audit, we find some adjustments, so we share those with management, they review them, decide whether or not they're going to concur. So the most significant corrections were related to the OPEP obligations, the retiree healthcare, and the correction for allocation of healthcare costs, market value of the adjustments and so forth. Uncorrected statements, sometimes we find things that are small, but, you know, it's not unusual that in August you get an invoice for something that should have been in June, but it's so small that you just let it fall where it may in itself correcting the next year. So those are included, a summary, those are included with our letter. There were no disagreements on page 11 now, no disagreements with management, no consultations with other accountants where somebody says, well, we don't think Flatland's opinion is right on that, we're going to see what another auditor would say. We also request management to give us a letter saying that they told us the truth and disclosed everything that we've asked. None of the matters resulted in a condition, it's not like, well, if you don't do this, we're going to fire you and get different auditors. There is no, no such discussion, and no other issues that came up, you know, during our audit. So your staff is very competent and very cooperative during the audit. So with that, Alicia's going to jump in on page 12.
As well as saying, everything in here is detailed out in our letter, so I'll just give you a brief overview of the bullets here on page 12. The allocation of costs, I mentioned already in that, that relates to several areas throughout the city, and so we've been talking about different ways to revisit the cost allocations. Another component of that message in the letter is, you know, making sure that when you do allocate costs, that you have a good basis for how you allocate them, and that that basis can be supported, and also that you would refresh it every couple of years and revisit it to make sure it's still appropriate. Resolution of terminated tax captures, we've talked about this for a few years, and what this really relates to is several years back, I want to say sort of going back to 2008 or '09, there was a few tax districts that were closed to the city, and there were funds held near that needed to be remitted back to the tax authorities. Those refunds have happened for two of the three, and there's one that still has some of those amounts on deposit and our messages, hey, let's get that closed down and get those funds remitted back. Bank reconciliation control procedures, we have stood up here for several years and made a comment about the bank reconciliations not being done timely. Many of you probably recall that. I'm happy to say that that's no longer the case, that the bank reconciliations are now being done timely, and we've also recommended that a second person look at them, because that was something that we also thought was a problem, there wasn't a senior person with a second set of eyes on them. We understand that somebody is now looking at them, the accounting department was able to get some sort of type of help, but there's no documented trail of that. Our recommendation is that the senior person that does the review, that they establish a documented trail of evidence of the review and verifying that it was done timely. Information technology general controls, as part of our audit now, for probably at least the past five years or so, we have been required by the profession to spend some time looking at technology, looking at internal controls over technology that support your financial system and ultimately support your financials that you issue. And I can just tell you that that area is in really great shape. The IT department really has everything buttoned down. We had some really minor best practice recommendations that we shared with your IT director, and I think like a day or two after that, she sent me an email and had rectified all those items, so, you know, that will certainly go away. Cash held at remote locations, we have, we often continue each year during our audit to visit your different remote sites. We've gone to the golf courses, the library, et cetera, just to look at how they're doing with maintaining controls over cash on hand. And so we did look at the golf course this year, and it's probably been about three years since we went over to the golf course, and we were pleased to see that the golf course had implemented a lot of the recommendations that we made about three years prior, and that things were in really good shape there. And again, that was an area where we had some really minor best practice recommendations, but nothing significant that we did, we looked at management. Legacy cost strategy, I know this is not a new topic to this body, and I know it's a high priority in your list when you're talking about, but it's something that we're always thinking about as we're coming, looking at things later, just to keep the conversation going around, long-term plans for funding unfunded pensions to a degree, but you're pretty well funded in your pension system, probably more so looking at retiree healthcare and kind of a long-term plan there as you're looking at your near and long-term financial planning and budgeting. So we just kind of want to keep that conversation going, because it's an important one, and we all know it's not going to go away, right? So that's kind of what the message is in there. Next is the water and sewer funds, and again, this is another thing that we have talked about probably the last couple of years, I'd say, or two or three years. And one of our observations several years back is that there was, you know, a growing fund balance or net assets in there, growing fund balance with probably declining system, you know, infrastructure. And so our message was, you know, this is what part of your rate is for, you have a fund, we really encourage you to use that to put the investment back in your system, because we were seeing a lot of water loss and just, you know, costs that you couldn't pass on to your residents. And so, we were pleased to see that in the past year, that your team really has spent a lot of time in that area, doing testing, doing diagnostics, doing some repairs in the system. Sounds like there's probably a lot more to be done, so we encourage you to keep doing that. Additionally, it's been a while since you've done a comprehensive rate study, and so that is something I think we'll be working with Mr. Zorn on going forward. Just to revisit the rate, does it make sense? How does this fit into our long-term plan? Are we in the right place? Look at what's happening with rates in Detroit, and so I think that'll be a good exercise for the city to go through, so. And then the last item, personnel policies, I always think it becomes a little controversial when it comes up, but there, we bring this up just as an informational item, we don't need to be significant. Finding, everything on this page is just general observations, they're not findings. But, you know, we were doing our testing, we noted in one of our samples, we did random sampling, so one of the expenses that we picked was a retirement gift for an employee. And there would be some folks at the state who would say that is a great cost, unless the city would have a policy to say that that's part of, you know, the employment exchange or that's part of your formal policy to provide things like gifts, coffee, you know, all these things come up. And so, so our message at the end of the day to management was just to protect the city and protect the things that you want to provide to your employees and that you think are important, just to put it in writing and have the council pass a resolution to say that this is part of our employment exchange and this is part of our authorized, you know, things that we're offering to our employees. That's what that is. We're not saying you can't do it, just that there's no...
Yeah, I mean, that's the kind, it's the kind of thing like Alicia said, we're really trying to protect you with this, because it's not a huge deal, but it's the kind of thing, you know, that, you know, we got these hundred-year-old laws on the books of the state of Michigan, but they haven't been repealed, so they're still there. So there are ways, if you formally adopt some policies, to continue doing what you're doing and you've always done, and quite frankly, are appropriate to do. But again, protect you, if you could formalize that into a policy, I think, is our recommendation.
Page 13 just summarizes the results from the federal awards audit over the past several years. In terms of the number of findings that we've had, you can see the number of findings in 2013 is significantly lower than 10 and 11. Certainly, there's been great progress made in that area, and I know that for fiscal 13, even as of today, that number would be much less, probably less than 10. And when we thought about these items, we really didn't think that it was, they were things that really needed the attention, time and attention of this group. We felt that they were minor things that management had under control, and we have talked at length with them, and we just left it at this summary here. But certainly, if, you know, the details are all in the federal awards report, if you were interested, but we weren't going to go into it this evening. So the next part of our presentation is going to get into the financial summary on for fiscal 13, and just some of the highlights there. Is there anything on the first part of the presentation that you're questioning on before we move on?
Sure. I'm going to have Alicia just going, just going first. Is there anything to, um, compilations for comments, particularly at the date of date four, including a vacant position and realignment of staff? I never had a talk about that, but...
We are on the, one of the positions budgeted is in OMB Finance Service Structure. That position is posted. The other, in the Treasurers, two tax clerks, the Technology Department were recommending a network engineer, the position will pay for itself, but another person has helped us. And that's not all of the vacancy positions during the budget, I will break that up. There are some things that, we have, our employment ranks have decreased through attrition, not always balanced, and there are some positions, for example, we have two clerks who process accounts payable. Not the norm, most communities our size will have one person. There's certain things that we need to rethink, the existing staff we have, and go through a reallocation of those resources. But we are within the budget recommending that the finance director's position be appointed, and then the two tax clerk positions can help with some of those cash receiving functions and those posting activities that were being discussed.
Yes, that's similar to what my question was on page four, you know, every budget process that I've been through, since I started my fourth, I've seen one, two, and three listed here as notations for something to improve on. Does that resolve those? Are we going to see this next year, or do you think that, you know, the hiring of new personnel to deal with the checkman balances, to deal with the separation of roles and receiving and output, will that resolve it?
I think it would certainly create the opportunity for it to be resolved. But I think it'd be worth talking about, okay, so how do we realign functions so that you can get the proper people doing the proper things and make that second bullet go away in particular? The first item, I can't guarantee that if I do this, that you're not, that we're not going to have issues with the audit, but there's going to be a different reason, or maybe they came in late. I mean, so I would say, you know, the opportunity would certainly be there, and then we would work, hopefully, with the city to make them go away altogether going forward.
Those were the only repeat notations, was there anything else that the city administration had to address?
I repeat the, our indirect cost, how we're charging for some of our indirect costs, that process needs to be, needs to be reviewed and then audited as we go through. There's what we budget, and then monitor it through the year, make sure that we're in compliance with what's been budgeted. And that, I would say, that's our facilities group, our motor pool group, all of our internal service funds, our funds that need to be reviewed. Mr. Pierce is here. Mr. Pierce is here.
My.
Oh, we had maximum last review that.
That was.
Two thousand.
Yeah, high thousand, one, two, three, two.
And a lot of the functions have changed and we've talked about that, but that needs to be high on our work list. The reality is, we're ten months done with the fiscal year. Most of these, you will, you can very well see.
Well, it doesn't speak to two and three automatically unless you guys fire me in the next two months because that's me, right?
Yeah.
You called me a bone earlier, I didn't really care for that.
I know, we're chipping away.
You know what? That's actually a really good point because we are given an opinion on processes, systems and controls in place for the entire year, not just at the end of the year, but hopefully by the following year.
But, but also if things have changed and come in the beginning of this fiscal year, they will note it and this is to a finding that has been resolved subsequent to your error.
Exactly. Yeah, I was going to clarify, we didn't, I didn't want to accidentally give you the wrong impression. What Alicia says is right, this gives you the chance to get rid of these items, but we're already ten-plus months into the new year and it's been this way for ten months. And so, what Mr. Pierce said is also right. If by the time we do our audit, these things can be corrected, we can say this occurred, however, since June, or whenever you hire these people, systems have been changed. Okay. So, it'll take a while. We didn't want to accidentally, you know, mislead you.
Okay.
Alicia, can you explain, I don't think I quite understand on page five, the DVA.
Yep.
I understand that that is a trust fund and you pay nothing but to retire. So, I don't understand the one hundred and seventy-one thousand.
Sure. So, let's just say at the beginning of the budget year, and I believe, Mr. Pierce can correct me, I believe for that specifically, the actuary estimates and projects what they think the cost will be each year and that's what's budgeted. Let's say the actuary said, we estimate that, you know, cost for retiree healthcare is going to be eight million dollars per year. So, that's what's budgeted and that eight million dollars is going to be divided by twelve and every month, you know, twelve is going to be sent over. But what happened is the actual costs were eight million, one hundred and seventy, no, the actual costs were one hundred and seventy-one thousand less than that. So, that money should have came back because you can't charge eight million if your costs were less than eight million.
Should have came back, but didn't.
But didn't.
That, you're, so you're right on.
Yep.
With your understanding.
And that's where monitoring those internal service funds.
Absolutely. So, we've, what we've talked about, and there's different ways you can do it, you know, maybe quarterly, maybe a couple of times a year, looking at how are we doing with our estimates and our cost allocations to where, compared to where we see costs coming in, to make sure you don't go over.
Got you. Okay, thank you for that.
Yes, my first question is on, back on page four, also the first bullet point. And the statement that you make here, is that like a general statement because it says that we don't have enough people to do the finance reporting function timely and accurately? Well, that's two different issues. One is timely and the other is accurately. You can be slow, but it doesn't have to be inaccurate.
Correct.
So, I don't, are you seeing both of those problems?
Yes, so to clarify the inaccurate part, you know, we've talked, we've talked a few times about, sometimes we'll come in and we'll say, you know what, this is wrong, you have to correct it. And we propose a correcting journal entry. Anytime we're doing that, that means something was wrong. In our opinion, the reason why we think that happens, not because your staff is incompetent, but because they're maybe moving quickly, because they're trying to get a bunch of stuff done at once, so they're kind of in a haze missing things. And oftentimes, there's a lot of things that get done by one person and get handed to us. In an ideal world, you would always have a senior person reviewing somebody's work. But when you have the most senior people doing the work, there's no one to review it. Or maybe there's no time to review it, so it comes right to us and then we kind of become your second set of eyes and we're really not supposed to be. And so, that's, that's what staff part would be referring to.
But it still doesn't have to be inaccurate. Even though the wrong person is doing it or we don't have two people looking at it, if the work is done correctly.
Yes.
It may be done slow.
Yep.
So, when you look at this statement, it says there are two things.
Yes.
We don't have enough people and the people that we do have probably aren't trained well enough to do the work right.
I wouldn't.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I mean, the short answer to your question is that we are seeing both symptoms. But I don't know that I'd say they're not trained well enough to do it. They may not have time to carefully do it. So, I think your staff is very competent, but they're stretched so thin and they're trying to do so many things and they're distracted because they've got other things to do. So, I mean, you are right, there are two separate issues and we are seeing both issues, but the lack of accuracy, we don't think is because of lack of competence, it's because they're so hurried and stretched.
You're the expert, so I'm only the critic.
Because if they would, I mean, if they took more time, they could get it right, but then it would be even less timely. So, at some point, you gotta, they sort of feel, we got a fish or cut bait here, here it is. And if they had more time, they would more carefully review it and check it and have a second set of eyes do it. So, I don't feel it's lack of competence, I feel it's that they don't have the time to devote, to do it properly.
Okay. Second question is, you do random sampling. But we see some of the same things periodically, every year we see some of the same things. Now, do you, in your random sampling, do you also go back and check the things that you found the year before to see if it's been corrected and that's why we see the same things each year?
Yes. I mean, in part, some things are random sampling, so we could never check one hundred percent of every revenue transaction.
I understand.
But what we can do every year, and we do do every year, is at the end of the year, we verify that you have all the cash in the bank that you say you have at thirty. So, there are some things that we can do as of a certain point in time and that's where the bank rec, we will always check to make sure that bank reconciliations are done. But to specifically answer your question, yes, we do. Whenever there are findings, we always do a follow-up to say, how'd you do this year? Are there improvements? Has anything changed?
Yeah, we do, you know, again, we don't want to accidentally mislead you. We do random sampling, but that's only one of the several types of sampling we do. So, we stratify things and we look at all the big stuff. We tie out all the big stuff and especially things that we can get outside verification like what you got from the state of Michigan, we can recalculate your property taxes and so on. We can verify from outside sources the federal grants. So, we stratify things and we tie down the big things. Then, we also evaluate the controls to determine where do we think there's weaknesses and then we specifically target those weaknesses to see if we see anything happening. And then we do random sampling on all the small stuff. And that's how we catch the things like, say, a retirement gift or, you know, that kind of thing. So, we do a variety of sampling. We compare to your budget, so we do analytical review, how is it compared to budget? We do analytical review, how is it compared to last year? Like, why did something go up or down so much? So, we do several kinds of sampling and random is just one of them.
Okay. I'm looking at page thirteen and there are a number of items on there that look like you look at the same things year after year. And if those are different errors in the same, for instance, community development block rate. If in two thousand and ten, you found ten errors and in two thousand and eleven, you found ten errors and there were ten different errors because of the sampling, that tells me something different than if the same ten errors repeated in the eleven, that you found in ten. So, that's why I ask if you go back and verify what you found the year before.
Yes, yes.
And like you did on line one where it says two or repeats.
Yeah. So, if my memory serves me correctly, on the CDBG one, I believe one is the repeat and two are not.
Okay. Okay, that answers my questions.
Just want to comment on accuracy and Alicia, let's correct me if I incorrect. I thought a lot of the accuracy issues was our source documentation and we, staff is taking a lot of, a lot more effort to record some of the initial balances and the assumptions being made in the budget process and for the current budget year we're in.
That would actually get different items on each side.
Okay.
On page thirteen, NSP is, is in parentheses. On page seven, NSP is no longer provided by the city government's funds. Number one, why is that on page thirteen even in there? And number two is, is it separate from two audits that?
So, they are no longer reported as a governmental fund of the city, but they are still included in your caper. They're just secretly committed as a component unit to emphasize they're legally separate. So, they show up like when the DDA shows up, for example. They're not part of your funds anymore.
They're just in a different place.
Different category. So, they're still in there and we still audit them.
So, you don't have findings whether the NSP is up to date or not, is it because of a federal grant?
All of these three findings related to CDBG, we do not have any findings for NSP in two thousand and thirteen.
Okay. So, then I think we were on, just getting to page fifteen. And so, you know, we put together these graphs just to kind of show things in a real overview and so we've got actually a six-year trend here. And what this basically shows is property taxes is your largest revenue source. I think you all know that. State sources, state revenue sharing would be your second largest, followed by licenses, permits and fees. And the property values have, you know, declined. So, the, sort of the up and down that you see in the property taxes, that's a little bit distorted because I think there was a timing with the issue of payment from the delinquent tax revolving fund from Oakland County, Erbs, that sound right? So, a couple of years ago. So, probably the year two thousand and ten, you know, was, was a spike. And then two thousand and eleven, there was a delay. You should have got some money. So, part of that blue should have been pulled back into the prior year or there's something like that going on. I think it's explained in the asterisk, but, but there's a little bit of a timing issue there. That's not strictly. And then, of course, you know, you've got the increase in the millage, you know, in the more recent year. So, that's, that's why the property tax revenue started going back up with the more recent years. Taxable value by component, again, you can see the millage rate jumped for twelve and thirteen. Otherwise, the millage rate has been.
Plus is on page sixteen.
Page sixteen. Oh, page sixteen. You know, the millage rate that was passed and was, was levying in, for two thousand and twelve, you can see. Otherwise, you can see the commercial and the industrial and the residential. The industrial is pretty small and pretty flat, but the commercial and the residential property values have fallen substantially. I think you're all, you know, all aware of that. We're just kind of putting into pictures what I think you've known. On page seventeen, this is the history since two thousand, the year two thousand, which is when the revenue sharing formula was changed up in Lansing. And you can see declining revenue sharing and remember that was your second largest source of revenue? So, declining revenue sharing from the state of Michigan. And the constitutional is relatively more stable compared to the statutory or the EBIT, the economic vitality incentive program. And so, the constitutional is right in the state's constitution. So, the state legislature, the governor can't do anything with that. That's based on formula. It goes to Lansing, it's collected, it comes back to the cities and the villages and the townships, based on a formula. The statutory, though, when they need to balance their budget, they can reduce the statutory revenue sharing. And so, that's what you've seen there on page seventeen. Page eighteen gets into just a six-year trend of your expenditures. And as you would expect, public safety is your largest expenditure, like it is in almost every single city. General government is next. That, that obviously covers the city clerk, city administration, the city treasurer, all the general government stuff and so forth. The others are relatively minor. But again, you can see in many cases, public safety, general government, you know, sanitation, transfers going down. And so, you can see how the city has tightened its belt over the past, you know, several years.
Excuse me, what's in support services?
The biggest part of that is tax refunds. There's other stuff in there, but that would be that and some general bonds, insurance would make up the biggest components of that.
So, this increase would be the tax refund?
Correct. So, rather than reporting as a reduction to tax revenue, you report them as expenses when you pay out refunds.
And who all is in public?
Well, it'd be the traditional items you think of, plus buildings would be in there as well.
Code enforcement, fire and police.
Yeah, yeah.
And court.
And court.
And court.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then emergency management.
On page nineteen, this just sort of gives you an overall big picture of your revenue and expenditures and what's happened to your fund balance over the last five years. And so, again, you can see on the revenue, when the, when the orange has gone down, you reacted and tightened your belt and cut on the expenditures to be able to keep your fund balance in the positive, which has been a terrific challenge for many communities over the past several years. On page twenty shows the components of your fund balance. So, you know, this is a three-year trend, you actually increased your fund balance. Non-spendable, the darker blue on the top, you know, that's, that's inventory or prepaid expenses. You can't, if you've got gas tanks back there full of gas, you've got salt for the roads, if you've got, you know, that kind of thing, you can't spend that. And prepaid expenditures, you know, a lot of times, for instance, as an example, you may have to pay your, you know, July Blue Cross bill in June so that if something happens to somebody on July first, they're covered. So, you're sort of paying a month in advance, that kind of a thing is a prepaid expenditure. Restricted would be anything, you know, that's restricted by law, you know, specific tax millage that you have to use for certain things. Committed would be actions that, you know, the city council has taken and said, we're committed to doing these projects. Assigned would be things that, you know, management team could even assign and say, these are things that are, you know, planned for us. Unassigned would represent the discretionary, you know, part of your fund balance that has grown a little bit, you know, in, in recent years. So, again, under the challenges that you've had with taxable value, you know, that's been a fairly remarkable accomplishment. On page twenty-one, it just shows the same thing, but not just for the general fund. Page twenty was just the general fund. Page twenty-one includes the other, all the governmental funds in total. Summarizing on page twenty-two, you know, really, you know, we talked about the finances, but again, to sort of call into, you know, call into note some of the accomplishments, the city's reduced by over two hundred positions, you know, without layoffs. Like you said, we know that was something that Mr. Sharet and all the city officials were very proud of to not have any layoffs. Your defined benefit pension plans are, you know, pretty well funded. You know, the city plans reduce the, you know, legacy cost, it's always looking for different options to take care of people and, and control the cost. The city has long-range financial planning, which, you know, many communities don't, but the city Southfield has always been, you know, in the forefront of having long-term planning. And then, of course, the millage that was passed, you know, with supporting your voters is a very positive thing. So, you've had substantial challenges, but I really think that you've reacted to them, you know, very well. So, that's what we got for our presentation. We know you've got other things on the agenda. We very much appreciate the chance. Like I say, if you can imagine how much time we spent now, we spent a lot more time with the finance committee and they asked a lot of questions. They've got a very good understanding of what's going on in your staff. They've got a terrific attitude, you know, toward, you know, helping the city in controlling costs and so forth. So, we'd be glad to answer any questions if you have questions later because this is a lot to digest here. Alicia and I will come back to visit with you again if that's your preference or we can answer, you know, through Mr. Zorn.
I think there may be a few questions before you leave us today, Mayor.
Yes, I have a question about page four, the separation of duties. We know that this is the position of Mr. Pierce that comes up every year. The positions that we have named that would be higher, is that going to separate the collection, the depositing and writing check duty of Jim Pierce?
Well, we've not finalized that. That is my intent, that's the intention of duties. It comes up, every year I've been here, it comes up.
You know, it's a.
And he's, he's the person doing triple duty.
So, how, how does that get resolved? Is it something that is out of your control?
No, no, and as we post the position, Mr. Pierce is going to have to make a decision. Did we stay in the treasures officer or go? Will there maybe a decision to post it? I don't think we finalized that at this point. I'd like to spend some time with HR and discuss that, but it is my intent to get that resolved. It is my intent to get that resolved.
You know, I think he's amazing, but this has continued to come up, and we need to address it. And it's nothing that he's doing wrong, but every year we're told that this is putting us at a risk.
Well, we're recommending that the position be posted and until...
Which position would that be?
Well, I'm posting a finance director. I'm treating it that he is the deputy treasurer. He may choose to be a candidate for that position as it goes through an internal posting. If not, you know, it may go external.
Then my other question is, you know how we get the phone call from the state and they'll threaten us if we don't meet the timeline? Our additional staff, will that address the timelines or the difficulty of meeting the timelines if we're reporting these developments? And if we bring the staff on, will be able to meet the timeline?
I do at this time. I just, I may come back at a certain time to council and say, "You know what? Maybe we need another body in this group." But I really think we need to look at some of the existing personnel, and are we using them as wisely as possible? But I know for purposes of the budget and what the timing that we were going through due to one position, I knew we have cap receiving functions in the treasurer's office. But I think we may come back and look at, I could very well come back and say, "Another body's needed." But I would really like to complete a review of our staff level and how we come to other cities of existing size. And I'm sure there are other things that we... And I may very well come back, that we might need to buy some talent to help us make that evaluation.
Thank you.
Unless you made an announcement at our finance committee meeting, are you going to make that tonight?
Well, just that I'm retiring. I've got my pre-retirement beard coming on here. Retiring June thirtieth. This month, I will have been with Plant Moran for forty years.
Wow.
Started over here in the Central Park Plaza Building, where I live for our current location. So forty years with the firm, and I'm looking forward to more time with my wife.
Is that how I am?
Thank you.
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, yes. Last day of our fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
I would be remiss not to recognize the efforts of Mr. Pierce, Hanan Azu, as well as Karen Ellie in this process. And a lot of our people put a lot of effort in getting this in, and then the challenge with Mr. Shret's passing, there were just certain things that only he knew. And that there were plenty of times in that February that I was sweating over what we promised the state. But, you know, again, those three staff persons, you know, and others, but those were the three who were the lead on our behalf, and I'm grateful for that.
And if I could just say to the team and to you, Fred, you stepped in at a time, like you said, there were so many things that Jim just knew. I think you deserve a great amount of appreciation for this process, because I know it wasn't easy and the state was hammering us, you know. One thing you took is...
Thank you, Fred. Fred. No, you're...
All right. So, you know, I...
Mr. Pierce, you can take the next slide.
Thank you. You just shut the door for signature. I got it off that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pierce.
No, I don't have that. I'll come back. I'm here.
Better to have one.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lam?
This basically is, oh, I'm sorry. Most of you have seen this as an information item in the past. It went away for some inexplicable reason in 2012.
This is your copy?
This is my version.
Okay. So basically, what Mr. Zorn and I have been discussing is the resurgence of a monthly budget summary with the council. We did it for years and years and years. Then Mr. Sharet, at some point in time, in 2012, that's the last one I did, I think was February 2012. And what he would do is he'd go through these things and he'd say, you know, "What's this changed or has changed that?" He never seemed to have the time. So what he did, Karen, would just review it and send you guys a letter as an information item saying, "I've reviewed this and everything's good." But we felt it would be a little more germane if we actually gave the data so that you could review it, because you may see stuff that we don't think is strange to us. So basically, what I'm trying to do, this is March thirty-first, 2014. I'm just waiting for a couple more bank statements so I can do April. And this is a format that we used in the past. I want to make sure it's a format that council is comfortable with, because if they want something different, then they can have, you know, more information, less information. We have discussed, if you see in the general fund part, the public safety for whatever purposes that is combined. In the next statement, we're going to break out police, fire, court, all of that separately. Court is broken out, but police and fire and public records safety and ETS and that, separately, so that you can see each line. They're really, pretty much, everybody is on target. There's a couple of departments. We know that snow, of course, is up this year, may, may have to do a budget adjustment for that. Let's see, what else did I see in this? Fees are down. State shirt revenues are always down because they come in after the year end, the last big payment comes in. Parks and Rec, their fees look to be down a little bit, but theirs tend to pick up in spring, so we're going to have another look at that when we get to April, although April wasn't now that great for them for golf, for sure. Um, there's one other one I... That's that one. But that leads to the next point is, we're going to, within the next three days, ask for another finance meeting, because what we want to do this year is actually do budget adjustments. For several years, we've kind of taken it, as long as the appropriation in total is fine, you know, we can move the money around, which is how the budget is adopted. But there's certain variances in the CAPR book. There's like two or three pages of variances that, had we come back, I wouldn't have to explain in the book, if we would just come back and actually get a budget adjustment from the council and have it on some seconds. So we're hoping to come back sometime. I would imagine probably we're going to adopt the other budget in the June meeting for council adopting budget adjustments such as correcting, you know, for the snow, because the snow is going to go over this year because of the heavy snow. The taxes for this year are going to show over a hundred percent, because Mr. Shret used a lower taxable value than what came out after the fact. Plus, as, sorry, as the auditors mentioned, one of the LDFAs was, according to assessing, is still capturing, it really isn't capturing, it's actually being recorded as a regular tax instead of an LFA. So there's a reimbursement from the LFA, which is not going to be received, so we're going to have to do a budget adjustment of that and then increase the budget for taxes. So we have several things that we need to, and Mr. Zorn and I are going to have to go over in the next week or two, so that we can get a package together for council finance, so that we can do some budget adjustments before year end, which is usually what the auditors tend to like instead of, you know, the end of the year. But we probably do some after the fact, too. Then I just have to footnote that in the CAPR that subsequent to year end, council will do budget adjustments, if necessary. So I'm not really, I mean, I don't know if you guys want to just take this and...
So would you like a consensus or...
Yeah, I just let you kind of look at it and if you can get a consensus from council over the next week or two or so.
And we thought we'd take feedback if there are any questions as they come up as well.
Right.
This is exactly what I've been asking for.
Me, too. I, well, this is so funny, because I did them for months. And then he just said, "Stop doing it, I'll do my own." And I'm like, "Okay."
And it would be, and you said you're going to do it, the public safety, a bigger breakdown...
I'm going to actually do the actual component, so you can see everybody's department.
But this is, this is actually...
Now, what I, what you don't see, if you look in the CAPR, the CAPR, there are several other funds, like drug forfeiture, auto theft, section, what, section eight, CDBT. There are certain other funds that we just don't do, because they were never, they're not, they don't collect taxes, they don't, I mean, I can add those as reports, but basically, these were the funds that seemed to be what anybody was really interested in, because they are the major funds for the city.
And I just want to, you know, obviously, we're open to refining this report. In particular, we might, on one hand, break down a couple other bigger departments. And when you look at the budget document, we have all of the line items in each of the sixty departments. There may be a few that council, on a different period or month, who wants to see the full breakdown of what's happening in a particular department. And in particular, those that represent the largest pieces of our budget. So obviously, as we go through this, I think in the first three, four months, this document will continue to evolve to where it's something you folks are comfortable with.
Jim, each department used to get their own, their own budget analysis every month?
Well, the actual reports off of the Eden system, the departments themselves can get...
No, no, okay. I mean, that is available today.
Yeah, you could, I mean, if you wanted all this detail, you could have it.
No, I'm just saying to you that...
No, yeah. Departments are supposed to, they all have access to the Eden system and should be running their reports. Actually, this is a great, this is actually is a great help.
This is a culmination of everybody's...
Right. This is a great help for me, because it helps me at the end of the year end, because I've already seen four or five things I know I already have to pick.
Well, the monthly was very important to see as well.
And it is.
You know how to move your money.
Right. And you want to make sure that nobody's going over.
You know, I know, as I was concerned, you know, when they entered the budget, everybody would buy, clean out the budget.
No, we actually, no, I...
I wanted some kind of...
I sent out an email, like, the first week in June, saying, "You can't do any more purchase orders." And that goes to council. You can't do any more purchase, none of that goes on anymore.
I wanted sixty, eighty, ninety, that's all right.
That's fine.
And again, the finance committee may want to take a more in-depth. Karen Ellie and I, as we sat down with each of the departments of the budget we put together, we were looking at the information as of January. And it's my intent to use that as part of a monthly review process with departments. Here's where you're at, here's where your budget, what's happening. And I'll tell you, the largest issue tends to be overtime. And if we can get that under control, that's one of the areas where we can, you know, tighten our belt a little bit. I know we spoke about this in the last two weeks, overtime. An opportunity to wait, why are, why is this one person have twelve hours a week? Overtime, twelve, every week. And those are the types of things we are looking at.
Yeah. This is what I've been looking for. We used to have it all the time. I know, I used to try to go. Yeah. Well, I was never used to do it June. I don't know why, but we always used to stop at May, because June was, it took so long to get through all the adjusting entries, that it was no longer germane to have a CAPR. But, yeah, it's not a problem, and I, it just was one of those things where he decided he wanted to do it that way. He thought it took up too much of my time, which fortunately, they give me a laptop, so I have, you know, access to most of the stuff. So if I'm sitting at play and I don't have anything to do, because I'm running license, and there's only one queue, I can sit back and do my work. So, I like the show I'm doing right now. But, yeah, I was going to bring up the question about the over time, because I think that... I can do a separate report for overtime, that's very easy. Yeah, because that's one of the things I think that we need to take a look at, because that can be, something sneaks up on you in a hurry. Well, and one of the other things is we've now, because we've cut so many people and people are now, been given more comp time, after they get to their max at comp, even if they wanted to comp, it automatically gets paid off as overtime. So more people, more and more people are using their comp and then, or turning it into overtime afterward, after the back. So, yeah, it's something that I, he and I, that was one of the first topics we were going to talk about.
And that becomes a collective bargaining issue for us, too.
Oh, sure.
We're watching.
It's interesting, looking at the library funds, the state penal fines, they expected ninety thousand dollars, and so far, they got zero. That's because they give that, the check comes in July. There should be a footnote for that, isn't there, Fred? Yeah, there you go. That state one comes in July, or August, it's one that I always have to accrue. Okay, so is there any family that you're in? Yeah. Yeah, I tried to, I mean, some interest kind of got on my nerves after a while, this one. But this is, yeah, but this is, you know, I've...
So we're staying in and then...
So, yeah, if you see any other, like I said, if you want an overtime report, that's fine, just direct Mr. Zorn and I.
Well, we're staying in and then...
So I can be a separate reporter, I can just, yeah, I can do a separate report for just overtime, and then this one, because like, yeah, overtime could probably be a one major with all the departments.
And then, I just want a quick comment on the LFA. We haven't shut down, shut the last one down, correct, Jim?
Well, I mean, that's, it's a very perplexing issue, because in 2009, Nick wrote a council item, had it all ready to go in place. I found the item, and somehow it got pulled, for some reason, never made it to your agenda. So it's been sitting out there from 2009, and they've been harping about it.
I'm not opposed to refunding the tax and jurisdiction money.
Well, you know, I think I refunded it all.
My recommendation is going to be that we keep the leverage for other economic development items. We, Ms. Freeman and Mr. Crowde and I have been in meetings with the county, and once we get that back, if there may be something we need in the future, that we may need a horse trade on, and that may be our card to play. So, you know, my recommendation will be something in fact that we refund the money, but the actual entity stays alive until...
Well, basically, that's what it is, because quite frankly, the assessor was directed by the county, I think, two years ago to stop, because we were actually collecting it and then reimbursing it. We would take it from everybody, then give it back to everybody at the end of the year. And they said, "No, just give it to them upfront." And so that, I think they changed that like two years ago on the warrant.
In theory, we could rewrite and do LFA plan that would activate that.
I just question what area, isn't that, I'm not entirely sure which one it is, if it's the tax and park on, it's not bridge, because Bridge Street Bridge is still open, because we still have a loan, a lurk loan and a sidewalk assessment in that area. So that still has a couple years.
We may need it something...
The smart zone is another one we've never...
They want to be able to hold on to that.
But, yeah, probably before August, I'll have to hose that whole thing out, because we don't need, I mean, at least if I know what direction I'm going, the auditors won't have a, have a counter, and I could say, "Okay, it's already been decided, this is what we're going to do." I'm pretty sure everybody's been reimbursed. I think the money that's left there is still ours. So I don't know that there's a real big issue.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Right on.
Yeah. I know you're lucky. That was a lot.
We're doing one. Okay, we're going to move to item number three of our two thousand and nine...
They're spending that's what?
No.
They're spending it.
Okay. Thanks, Jim.
You see the new floor?
Yes.
You see the new floor? This...
Yeah, everyone has a table. That's just at the table.
Okay.
Actually, I already have a copy. Actually, there's a chair. The table.
You're my Tuesday afternoon, you know, reading material. Thanks. I love the humor of the book. I want to see, you know, I, I survived through these, knowing where your take is, though.
No.
Madam President, Mayor and Council, I just passed out the 2014, 2015. This is the executive summary sheet that you're used to seeing in the budget. The last meeting was discussion about seeing more detail. The item that Karen Ellie is passing out right now is that item. And Karen, have you passed out the directory?
Yep.
Okay. The one white sheet is the directory. The green pages are our revenues for each of the departments. And the yellow is the expenditure. The blue is the personnel shoots. And I just want to use the board for a second. We have certain limitations within our Eden system, and my intent, when I...
Yeah.
Component, so you can see everybody's department.
But this is, this is actually.
Now, what I, what you don't see if you look in the CAFER, the CAFER, there are several other funds like drug forfeiture, auto staff, section, what, section eight, CDBT, there are certain other funds that we just don't do since they were never, they're not, they don't collect taxes, they don't, I mean, I can add those as reports, but basically, these were the funds that seemed to be what anybody was really interested in, because they are the major funds for the city.
Okay. And I just want to, you know, obviously, we're open to refining this report, in particular, we might, might want to add, break down a couple other bigger departments. And when you look at the budget document, we have all of the line items in each depart, each of the sixty departments. There may be a few that council on a different period or month who wants to see the full breakdown of what's happening in a particular department, and in particular, those that represent the largest pieces of our budget. So obviously, as we go through this, I think in the first three, four months, this document will continue to evolve to where it's something you folks are comfortable with.
Jim, each department used to get their own, their own budget analysis every month?
Well, the actual reports off of the Eden system that departments themselves can get.
No, no, okay. I mean, that is available today.
Yeah, you could, I mean, if you wanted all this detail, you could have it.
No, I'm just saying to you that, that.
No, yeah, departments are supposed to, they all have access to the Eden system and should be running their reports. Actually, this is a great, this is actually is a great help.
This is a culmination of everybody's.
Right, this is a great help for me, because it helps me at the end of the year, because I've already seen four or five things I know I already have to pick.
Well, the monthly was very important to see as well.
And it is.
You know, you know how to move your money.
Right, and you want to make sure that nobody's going over.
You know, I always was concerned, you know, when they entered the budget, everybody would buy.
No, we, actually, no, I.
I wanted some kind of.
I sent out an email, like, the first week in June, saying, you can't do any more purchase orders unless it goes to council. You can't do any more purchase, none of that goes on anymore.
I wanted sixty, maybe thirty, that's all right.
That's fine.
And, and again, the finance committee may want to take a more in-depth, Karen Ellie and I, as we sat down with each of the departments of the budget we put together, we were looking at the information as of January, and it's my intent to use that as part of a monthly review process with departments, here's where you're at, here's your budget, what's happening. And I'll tell you, the largest issue tends to be overtime, and if we can get that under control, that's one of the areas where we can tighten our belt a little bit. I know we talked, spoke about this in the last two weeks, on overtime, and an opportunity to wait, why are, why is this one person have twelve hours a week, overtime, twelve every week, and those are the types of things we are, we are looking at.
Yeah, this is what I've been looking for. We used to have it all the time.
I know, I used to try to go.
Yeah.
Well, I never used to do it June, I don't know why, we always used to stop at May, because June was, it took so long to get through all the adjusting entries that it was no longer germane to have a CAFER, but, yeah, it's not a problem, and I, it just was one of those things where he decided he wanted to do it that way, he thought it took up too much of my time, which fortunately, they gave me a laptop, so I have, you know, access to most of the stuff, so if I'm sitting at play and I don't have anything to do, because I'm running lights and there's only one queue, I can sit back and do my work. So, I like the show I'm doing right now.
But, yeah, I was gonna bring up the question about, you know, can you separate the overtime on it?
I can, I can do a separate report for overtime, that's very easy.
Yeah, because that's one of the things I think that we need to take a look at, because that can be, something sneaks up on you in a hurry.
Well, and one of the other things is we've, we've now, because we've cut so many people, and people are now, been given more comp time, after they get to their max at comp, even if they wanted to comp, it automatically gets paid off as overtime, so more people, more and more people are using their comp and then, or turning it into overtime afterward, after the back, so, yeah, it's something that I, he and I, that was one of the first topics we were going to talk about.
Well, and that becomes a collective bargaining issue for us, too.
Oh, sure.
We're watching.
It's interesting, looking at the library funds, the state penal fines, they expected ninety thousand dollars, and so far, they got zero.
That's because they give that, the check comes in July, there should be a footnote for that, am I right? Yeah, that, that state one comes in July or August, it's one that I always have to accrue.
Okay, so is there any payment in the year end?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I tried to, I mean, some, interest kind of got on my nerves after a while, this one.
But this is, yeah, but this is, you know.
So, we're staying in, and then.
So, yeah, if you see any other, if, like I said, if you want an overtime report, that's fine, just direct Mr. Jorn, and I will.
Well, we're saying we want to do that in a department.
You, so I can be a separate reporter, I can just, yeah, I can do a separate report for just overtime, and then, this one, because like, yeah, overtime could probably be a one major with all the departments.
And man, I just want a quick comment on the LDFA, we haven't shut down, shut the last one down, correct, Jim?
Well, I mean, that's, it's a very perplexing issue, because in two thousand and nine, Nick wrote a council item, had it all ready to go in place, I found the item, and somehow it got pulled, for some reason, never made it to your agenda, so it's been sitting out there from two thousand and nine, and they've been harping about it.
I'm not opposed to refunding the tax and jurisdiction.
Well, you know.
I want.
I think I refunded it all, I think I'm wrong, that's our money.
My recommendation is going to be that we keep the leverage for other economic development items. We've, Ms. Freeman and Mr. Crowe and I have been in meetings with the county, and once we get that back, if there may be something we need in the future, that we may need a horse trade on, and that may be our card to play, so, you know, my recommendation will be something in fact that we refund the money, but the actual entity stays alive until.
Well, basically, that's, that's what it is, because quite frankly, the assessor was directed by the county, I think, two years ago to stop, because we were actually collecting it and then reimbursing it. We would take it from everybody, then give it back to everybody at the end of the year, and they said, no, just give it to them upfront, and so, that, I think they changed that, like, two years ago on the warrant, so.
In theory, we could, we could rewrite and do LDFA plan that would activate that.
I just, I just question what area, isn't that, I'm not entirely sure which one it is, if it's the tax and park on, it's not bridge, because Bridge Street Bridge is still open, because we still have a loan, a lurk loan and a sidewalk assessment in that, in that area, so that still has.
We may needed something.
The smart zone is another one we've never.
They want to be able to hold on to that.
But, yeah, probably before August, I'll have to hose that whole thing out, because we don't need, I mean, at least, at least if I know what direction I'm going, the auditors won't have a, have a counter, and I could say, okay, it's already been decided, this is what we're gonna do, and I, I'm pretty sure everybody's been reimbursed, I think the money that's left there is still ours, so, I don't know that there's a real big issue.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah.
We're done with one, okay, we're gonna move to item number three of our two thousand
and nine. They're spending that's what?
No.
See, it's a little. Okay. Thanks, Jim.
You see the new floor?
Yes.
You see the new floor? This. I think that's it.
Yeah, everyone has a table, that's just at the table.
Okay.
Actually, I already have a copy. You're my Tuesday afternoon, you know, reading material. I love the paper, I wanna see, you know, I, I, I survived through these, I don't know where your take is, though.
Madam President, Mayor and Council, I just passed out the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, this is the executive summary sheet that you're used to seeing in the budget. The last meeting was discussion about seeing more detail. The item that Karen Ellie is passing out right now is that item. And Karen, have you passed out the directory?
Yep.
Okay. The one white sheet is the directory, the green pages are our revenues for each of the departments, and the yellow is the expenditure, the blue is the personnel shoots. And I just want to use the board for a second. We have certain limitations within our Eden system, and my intent, when I started this process, I wanted to show a column, twenty eleven, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, two thousand and thirteen naturals, two thousand and fourteen department head, two thousand and fourteen administration, then two thousand and fourteen mayor, and two thousand and fourteen council, this would be the final adopted. This is a format in the last two cities I worked in that we had, well, our Eden system has certain limitations, I've learned. And I think it's beneficial for council to see the last three years, the actual, and even the actual, I just learned late this afternoon, that the actual is the number that when we started to put the budget together. In other words, the system doesn't automatically date that, and it updated, it would have to be manually put in. So I'm gonna ask Karen Ellie over the next few days to correct these sheets to show you the actual expenditure to date, so it'll be in alignment with what Mr. Pierce just showed you. I was, I was quite surprised that it wouldn't update automatically. The charter says the budget goes from the department head to the administration to the mayor and council. We don't have anything in our system that shows you folks all of them, and I think it's, I spoke with Laverne, she'll be speaking with Eden, our software company, to see if this is a change that could be made in the future, but for purposes of what we're doing, much of what we've done is just simply mimic what we've done past years, and then, in the past years, we've not seen detailed sheets. So, I, I'd like to distribute that for council to go through it, I can make myself available to ask ques, answer questions. I do believe we should probably have another date for budget purposes, and we can continue to refine this. I also have a handout, a one pager, of a vacancy position that we're proposing to be filled, and I'd like to hand that out. Ran out of colored choices, folks, so, if, this is the vacancy pages. And you'll see, we're proposing, within the building department, an additional clerical, secretary two, in the clerk's office, administrative assistant, in OMB, the financial services director, the police department, eight officers and six cadets, this is what we discussed in December, technology services, the health desk assistant and network engineer, that network engineer position will pay for itself for what we were paying in consulting fees, the treasurer, two tax clerks, outside funds, cable TV, producer director, and a secretary. At a later date, there will be some discussion about reorganizing our community relations and our cable, and I, that, the administration is still evaluating what that entity may look like. Motor pool, communications technician and a fleet technician, water and sewer, a contractual GIS person will become full-time. That position is currently under contract, about, costs about a hundred and forty thousand a year, making the first at full-time will be about an eighty thousand dollar expenditure with wages and fringe benefit, so we'll realize the savings there, we're reviewing that contract. Water, currently, within water and sewer, Lori, how many, can you speak to how many positions we have posted right now in water and sewer?
We have the water maintenance worker, and I think we said we filled four positions, we have one internal candidate, so depending if that person takes the job or not. And then we have the highway posted, and I think you said we could fill two in highway.
So we actually have positions that have been internally posted and are going through external, and in the next month, we'll complete that process.
I'm hearing two different things, so, you got this list here.
This list here does not include what's being budgeted, what has been budgeted and posted right now, but I will go back, we have positions we're filling now in streets and highways and water.
Let me just say it aloud, and make sure I'm hearing it right. This is new positions added.
New.
The others are already budgeted, but vacant.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, and so I, I think, January-ish, this body spoke to getting some of those positions filled in streets and highways, and they're currently budgeted, those are being posted, and we're going through that process right now.
Do we have a cost figure on these, a fee call?
We will put that in in the next piece, but if you go through the budget sheets and the blue sheets, the salaries for each of these positions is in, is in there. So if you go to the building section.
I follow you.
You'll see this, the range for a secretary two, and that position has been built in the budget. Apparently, this model was used years ago, the colored sheets, the green, the yellow and the blue, and Karen, do you know the last time this was used and presented to council this way?
I don't know if it was that one.
I don't ever remember.
No, okay.
I don't think it was that one, it's not a Tom, it was just, um, when, when Danny Hirsch used to work here, and we would print out a budget for every department, a physical budget post.
Okay.
We would use the different colors to help the department be able to differentiate between which sheet was, was regarding which part of the budget.
And I, I guess I apologize, I thought you folks saw, the council saw that years ago, okay. But if you'll see, you know, if you look at the first pages, the first department is the accounting group, the total expenditures for the year, and word says department request, that's also one of our challenges. The department head requests a council to declare at this point.
Fred, Fred, where are you?
Just the second, the first yellow page, Jim.
First yellow page.
And we're gonna, we'll continue to refine this, but you'll see, where it says, the last column on the right, department request, that actually should read, and this is one of the software issues, at this point, mayor's recommendation, and the total expenditure for that group would be five hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars. Then if you go to the blue sheet, you'll see the position that are in the city controller, deputy treasurer, and you see the pay range. The accounting operations, you see each of the positions, and then what the range is on that.
And then, Jane, are we looking at scheduling the next meeting to review the question?
We, I was hopeful that maybe Jane seconded the amount of work, I spent some time with Laverne today about how we can restructure this, and I'd like to, on each of these books, you know, the fact that even the pages don't number, I'm used to, when you, the New World system, the page, revenue page comes out, everything's numbered, and these are all by alphabetical order by department, and that was the one directory that Laverne passed out, was the fun number and the alpha name, because you'll see A eight, accounting general, administration is the second group, but we were hoping June second. And in the past, you know, if you look at the first document I passed out, council saw just the executive summary. This is the detail on all of that executive summary. Then the last item I have is the proposed infrastructure, and this was passed out as part of the gray book passed out last week in the executive summary, and these are the proposed infrastructure capital projects.
You're trying to teach us a lesson, right?
Pardon?
You're trying to teach us a lesson?
No, no, I, I will tell you, the software, I, I'm very disappointed in the limitations of the software.
You're not the only one.
I, I know when I drew this out at Karen last week, she looked at it and she said, this just can't do this, and I went and, sorry, Karen, had a conversation with IT to reinforce and, you know, but we could continue to work to get this up, like, that I think I heard council asking for. And, you know, maybe we do an orange sheet for the capital components of each of these I can run through the proposed infrastructure. Replace the roof at the Beechwood Pro Shop, ten thousand, replace the roof at Code House, ten thousand. Code House is a property I'd like to have a conversation with council about, a disposition strategy or some type of strategy for the future use. Repair and replace the spot concrete at Civic Center, there's fifteen thousand in this budget, but in the current year, we've got sixty-five thousand for spot concrete, and you should see that work begin in the next few weeks. Repair at the Berg site exterior, twenty-five thousand, renovation, completion of fire station two kitchen, that's thirty thousand, the motor pool heating system, forty, repair Beechwood exterior, that's a hundred thousand, replace roof at Public Services Building, a hundred and sixty thousand, install information, electronic signs at Civic Center in Beechwood, that's the signs we've talked about as part of Evergreen Road project, two hundred thousand, boilers, air handlers and condensers for the arena, two hundred thousand, replace the roof on the PR Parks and Rec Building, that's, I believe there are five roof surfaces there, that's two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred, replace partial roof at the Sports Arena, that's three hundred and sixty-two thousand, so we're, within our facilities group, a one point three, five improvements. Major streets, we'll continue our Bridge Street monitoring, fifteen thousand, traffic signal upgrades, LEDs, fixtures, forty thousand. I'm not sure if those locations have been finalized, there's some traffic signal modernization, eighty-five thousand, Evergreen Road, twelve, twelve to thirteen mile, there's a hundred thousand, replace temperature street lighting along Civic Center Drive, it's two hundred and fifty thousand, resurface eleven mile from Inster Road, that should read twenty-three hundred feet, is five hundred thousand, Millen undercut nine mile from Beach to Telegraph, that project will happen not this, this year, but next, it'll start next May. Downsized Northwestern Service Drive from eight to nine mile, five hundred thousand. Reconstruction of Evergreen Road with roundabouts from ten to six ninety-six, this is the local match, seven hundred thousand. Total reconstruction of Greenfield Road from eight mile to nine mile is one point one. That number's actually higher, since we've gotten the preliminary numbers, we will adjust that. When we put the budget together, we were still deoiling with, and I think if council recalls, the city's actually, piece on that, I think, was sixty-two thousand.
Right.
Replace damaged residential meters, this is now in water and sewer, forty-five thousand, assessment of sewer and water utilities, a hundred thousand, assessment of stormwater utilities, a hundred thousand, upgrade a sanitary pumping station, two hundred and fifty thousand, sewer cleaning and conditioning assessment, five hundred thousand, replacement of commercial meters, six hundred and fifty thousand, replacement of obsolete reading system, one point five million, replacement of water and sewer lining Evergreen, ten to six ninety-six, one point six million, that is part of the Evergreen Road reconstruction. Citywide water system rehab, two point two million, replacement of water and sewer main linings, Evergreen eight to nine mile, three point five million, citywide water and sewer main lining replacement, five hundred thousand, five million, and then replacement of water mains in sections thirteen, twenty-six and thirty-four, eight point nine, for a total of twenty-four million. This was a lot of what we saw in last week's presentation.
Mr. Jorn, you have a big question? Fred, before Tom Brucknitz retired about ten years ago, replacing water and sewer on Hollywood Street.
Okay.
Was, he said it was one of his top priorities, it has never surfaced again. I, I just don't know where that is. And after our meeting last, when we talked about Evergreen Road between twelve and thirteen, I went and drove it. I mean, in my estimation, Providence Drive and Mount Vernon, both concrete streets are in terrible shape, worse than Evergreen, and it would seem to me that, you know, a ton of people are on Providence Drive, with all those apartments and the commercial.
Your Evergreen Roads eligible for federal aid, Providence is not. I, I don't know if Mount Vernon is eligible for federal aid, and that's the link between what roads are eligible. There's our major locals, and I don't disagree with that statement, and I think at the one agenda meeting, it came up, how does Evergreen Road, twelve, beat out some of these, even some of the other, our service drives are all eligible for federal aid, how that road beats out our service drives, I'm not sure, but it's one of the, the, the federal aid, the topsy-turvy of road, road funding, it's not always logical.
Yeah, Northland Drive between Greenfield and Village is also terrible.
Yep. And, and if you recall, Tom, on May nineteenth, we were bringing an item to allow us to apply to the ED Economic Development Administration for Providence, Rutland, Northland Drive, JL Hudson Drive, to submit a grant to the Economic Development Administration, and that was one of the things we touched on, and the local match would be projects we already have in our funding queue, water main improvement for Northwestern Service Drive, eight to nine mile, what's being done, what's planned for Northwestern Service Drive, eight to nine mile, the road project, nine mile and Greenfield, all of those roads could be our match, as well as, we know we have water main work that needs to be done down JL Hudson Drive as well. What I, what I would like to do, and just with this part of the conversation coming up on facilities, that I would bring our engineer, and maybe on June second, we schedule twenty minutes, and we do a PowerPoint on what we're doing, and I apologize, Mr. Cyber, Hollywood, what section is that in thirty, thirty? Because I know in that plan we looked at last Monday, section thirty-four and thirty-five was in there, and we could take a look at that and address that. In the water and sewer, we're actually, this is for the next year, but I don't have, actually, it might be in that pile, I think we had outlined almost fifty-plus million in water and sewer projects, and I think sections thirty-four and thirty-five were in one of the next areas, and we, remember, we showed a map that showed all the breaks in that, that's what we were looking at. Not to say we may not be relining sewers as well, but if you notice the five million, that is almost a tripling of what we've been putting in sewer relining. And I'm actually going through an exercise with Mr. Pierce and our staff, our, I'm not sure, as we reline some of these sewers, that we're recalculating the investment in our infrastructure, that every time a sewer or water main is relined, you should be resetting the depreciation schedule for another forty years, and we're having a discussion to make sure that all of that information, as it's being done, is being mapped to GIS, is it getting to our accounting group.
Well, the other thing I was gonna say, as I mentioned to you on the phone, when I learned that we had thirty-eight million stockpiled, and again, it came up in our audit today, that's, that is, in the water and sewer fund, a balance of that much, then either, either we spend the money on projects, or we reduce the water rates that we're charging our residents.
I wish we would.
Well, it's, it's not right to stockpile, to take the money and just stockpile it. Well, it's not right to stockpile, to take the money and just stockpile it. You wouldn't do, you couldn't do that under bond funding. If you had a bond, that would be illegal. So as our auditor correctly points out, we've stockpiled a lot of money that, and it's come from water users. So to see on your 24 and 1/2 million in water and sewer projects, I feel a lot better about it. Otherwise, I want to say, we need to cut the water rate.
And I'll remind council, you just approved, the last meeting, 6 million in section 31, that's not part of this. And I expect the water part at the next year's audit to have grown an equivalent number, another 6 to 6 and 1/2 million. So we are, the water department, our total assets of 50 million, 34 receivable, 47 million in liquid assets. Cash and equivalents, investments and receivables.
Well, we also saw a ton of water main breaks last week.
And if you don't fix the water main break, then we all pay for it, because it's shrinkage.
Sure.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yes. I have not heard any conversation about a water tower, and I know that Farmington Hills just did one. With, you know, and they talked the success of that and lowered the water rate. Have we, or where have we even?
Sockblock.
That's what we're in, so it's their towers.
Well, Farmington Hills.
Farmington Hills is not part of Sockblock. And they use it, the concept is water shaving. They fill the towers up, and when peak demand, the water comes from the towers and saves everyone rates. And for Detroit, it reduces the mass volume for those peaks.
That's what we do.
Yeah, Sockblock.
Yeah. We fill them up at night, when the water rates are low, and use it during, sell it during the day.
But the water tower concept, is that enhanced with we have a Sockblock, or is that something?
Well, that or taking a look, and it might be part of our analysis, and I apologize, I actually thought we had a water rate study in here, might be a topic that comes up in the water rate study, because they'll analyze your peak demand and your volumes as part of the study, and that could very well be a recommendation, and we would work with our supplier, or even possibly look at putting one in.
Just the one, he reminded me, we have something at 12 Mile on Telegraph, that big holding something. What is that? Is that water?
That's Detroit.
That's Detroit?
We got a tank.
14 Mile. Their tank is right there behind the Five Guys, and that's Detroit.
We've got one at.
I don't know why it's Detroit that is, because we went through that when they were at Brownsville, and giving that extra parking for the shopping center.
Then we also have one that's on the, first, federal first. Then we had one down behind the Crick Union. That's underground.
Oh, at Norfley?
No.
Go ahead, tell us.
Which panel is it? Oh, the one in Lacey?
Yeah. I thought we had, I thought Tom Brugnitz said we had one that was underground.
Yeah, they did, but that was sewer.
Was that what it was?
That is sewer.
Oh, okay.
The other towers are by Beaumont Hospital and on 14 Mile in Burnet.
I was just reading, because they were talking the success, as how they were helping them. So I know we have the surplus, and I just wanted that to say.
It should be evaluated as part of a water rate study. If you can buy your water at a lesser rate, mainly something that goes through Sockblock or there's the concept of having our own, and reducing our peak demand from Sockblock.
Then the other thing is the decorative lights along Civic Center Drive. We're just replacing the damaged ones, is that what that is? Or are we putting a brand new light?
I need to go back to my staff on that, as I was reading it. I think we're just replacing, but let me go back.
Because I like the ones over there. I wouldn't be in favor of taking them down just to replace the different signs. They're nice.
And I wouldn't replace the pole, but maybe the actual lighting, they make an eight-point head light that's more energy efficient. And I need to go back to staff.
I think it's the LED bulb.
Is that, okay.
But it says replace.
I put a question as I was going through it, and I apologize for not going. And if we do do a schedule on June 2nd, I'll schedule someone to come in and have that. In the interim, any questions come up, give them to my office email or to Diana, and we'll start building those questions.
And I was looking at all the investment in Beechwood, Pro Shop, the electronic signs, and the exterior. When we say repair to the exterior, what does that mean? I think it needs help, like.
At Beechwood?
Yes.
Part of the concept was to create a stronger sense of place, a wow statement, the new electronic sign coming in and working to clean that up. And we are actually trying to figure out how to address ADA issues within that building as well. It's not part of this budget, but I've got a team looking at that as well.
This may not be of this budget, but it saddens me when I go on Beechwood, just, I mean, several things that we could do to enhance that building. When you go to look at the wood bleachers, they've never been sand or refinished. The grind has to be 20 years old on it, when it comes to the concrete up under the bleachers. I mean, because you could re-sand that and re-bondish it, and you don't have to replace them. Just getting the gum off the concrete, I mean, those type things, to me, you might take a step back and look at how we look. And we can't build new structures, but we can definitely make what we have look better.
I can, I'll share with council, last Thursday, a team of us from Parks and Rec and Facilities, myself, we spent three hours at the Bird, walking through each building and just coming up. We will do the same thing for Beechwood. And I'll share with council, this year, out of the current budget, the fences along with 8 Mile, 12 Mile that were put up, they were last done, I believe, in 2001, and they're all going to be repainted, power washed. And the same thought process that went into that, last time we did that, it was in excess of 50,000. We figured out, we believe we can do it for under 12, with the right team. And we could do, take the same approach to the bleachers and come up with, just hearing this comment, we will go through and figure it out. Get the gum cleaned up, and someone to re-sand and re-eurthane those bleachers.
And the fencing, and the fencing looks terrible.
Yeah.
Really bad. It looks terrible.
Well, even the landscaping where we, when you have the patio area, Fred, the Parks and Rec, and there was a neighborhood association picnic there, and I got there early, and I literally started helping them sweep up litter and trash, because it just, there was no one, it's not maintained. And that's a really nice area to have a picnic, they need to rent it out, but we've got to do better with our own sense of pride and our property.
We could do, we'll do the same, what we did at the Bird, I'll schedule that at Beechwood. I'm learning a lot more about, I've now done that in the John Grace Building, the Bird, and we will tour the beach. And just, I like hearing these comments, because give us a problem, and we'll figure it out, come up with a creative, cost-effective way to address it.
Yeah, a few questions, but first, we got to go back to that Evergreen Road between 12 and 13 Mile, because I was obviously the one that brought it up the last time. And, you know, Ken Joe, or Ken said at the last meeting about that bridge being repaired in his lifetime, so it was a new bridge. I will say that Evergreen Road between 12 and 13 Mile has been totally reconstructed in my lifetime, because I grew up there. And, you know, are we just proposing that to be on the infrastructure project because we can? Because it certainly isn't a need. Are we placing other projects that are federally eligible to the side in favor of this? Because you don't have me there on supporting this. You could get me there, but I'm not there yet.
The Evergreen Road project was submitted almost three years ago to the Federal Aid Committee. I'm going to be very candid, I'm not sure we've always been smart enough in our submittals. And one of the things we did to get the service drive from Bird to Evergreen, front of LTU done, was we made the project bigger. And it, when you go through the scoring and the points and that, there's a call for projects. We submit all of our federal aid committee eligible projects, the scoring. I don't think we've always been smart enough in what we've submitted. The fact is, we've now secured funds that were originally scheduled for 2016, and it got moved up a year. It might be 2017, and it got moved up a year without having the list. But we submit all of our federally eligible roads, that's a combination of the size, sometimes, and I'm convinced what we did on the service drive, Bird, by making the project bigger, we've got more funding. And I agree, now, the concept of horse trading, the federal funds, the federal aid committee, we've had conversations with them, and they won't buy it.
So here's what concerns me, we're all council members for the entire city, and we already hear that there's this unfair perception that the Southfield-Beverly Hills border gets more attention in infrastructure investments than the Southfield-Detroit border. So it's, you know, we're going to have to answer to people who won't understand why we're doing a reconstruction project on the north end of the city when the south end of the city is crumbling. You know, look at all of the repairs that are needed, they're all pretty much below 9 Mile. And, you know, we're going to have to answer to that. And I know residents who live at 12 Mile and Evergreen Road who are really questioning, you know, another round of road reconstruction, and they're not, it's not being necessarily welcomed, you know, I would say that the welcoming would be all along the south end of the city. And, you know, if the federal match, I, it's like, you know, you don't want to turn down something that's been applied for, been in the works, but I can see, even if it's a percentage of a match is $100,000 from the city's end, any one of these things on the facilities maintenance could be paid for that $100,000.
Or another road project.
Or another road project. I'm really, I really challenge anybody on this council to drive up to Evergreen Road between 12 and 13, because you wouldn't even think of it as any sort of road that we would need to put in money today.
Not compared to others?
Not compared to others. And I really couldn't support 100,000, even if it's a percentage of a match, $100,000 there, I couldn't support, when you could put it anywhere else in crumbling roads throughout the city. So you don't have me on that one yet.
And I'm not sure, but I can tell you, it scored and it got funding. How, Jeremy and councilman, we're still, I'm still learning it, I can tell you, I sit through these meetings monthly, and I'm not sure if we've always, we have now submitted projects now since '09, every opportunity we get. How that road scored, I don't disagree with anything you're saying, I'm still quite surprised. There is even a peer review, where the other peers review it, and.
I almost think that we need to figure out who's scoring these roads, you know, because I can't, I'll say it one last time, and I know I'm only repeating myself, I can't for the life of me imagine how that are a poor road. And it almost makes me distrust the, I want to go through the city and find out what the other poor roads are. Some of them are obvious, but that's a poor road. I don't know what is a poor road.
Let me do this, I will ask Lee Scholes for those roads that are, the list of federally eligible and the submittals. And we could put, there's a huge 11 by 17 spreadsheet of all the scores, the list doesn't carry forward, every year you renominate your sites and you go through the scoring again. And that particular project, I do think it was three years ago it was submitted, and three years ago was even in better shape.
Yeah.
And I can give you the history. If you'd like, we could probably bring in someone from the Road Commission. We had quite the conversation last week with folks at the Road Commission, and even, for example, Southfield doesn't have a vote on the committee, the votes are large communities, and it rotates every so many, every year. And I will get you the structure and how the rotation works. But we did reach out on Northwestern Highway, 8 to 9 Mile, and to our, the three entities that have a vote, there's a large community, a medium-sized community and a smaller community. They weren't, you know, when we introduced, hey, can we horse trade? Can we trade off, you know, this, can we trade off a project? What we offered was, let us pay for Northwestern Highway, 8 to 9 Mile, if I could keep the funding on another federally eligible road. The answer was no, because of the way the vote, and we even talked to the Road Commission folks about that, and again, the answer was no. Now, I'll do this on Evergreen Road, just to kind of change the matrix, I go to Tom Noshell and say, what would you say to horse trading that on Mossar Road, 11 Mile to Civic Center, which is really bad, which is a county federally eligible road? I want to hear if the answer is a different answer, is where I'm going with that. Certainly happy to have that conversation. We've got the federal commitment that commits to 90% of it.
Yeah. Secondly, I'd really love to review this. Is there an electronic version?
We can.
I don't need all this paper.
We can make an electronic, we can, will you give us today?
I can scan it and put it in the PDF.
Yeah.
It's not easily accessible any other way?
The problem with Eden is that it's in the Eden system, and each report is separate, and you have to turn it up by a certain code. So I can't, I could give you access to it and give you all the codes, and then you could look at it that way?
Just, I guess, well, in the future, and certainly not just specific to this, if there's ever like big piles of paper, I prefer it in electronic format.
We can PDF it. That is obviously by alphabetically, alpha order, by department. For sake of a PDF, it might be easier to do alpha order by all the revenues, expenditures, and then the blue sheets. But we could certainly take that and PDF it too, and make these segments as well.
That'd be more.
But we could make that happen.
Be easier for, at least for me to pipe through. Lastly, and you brought this up Fred, about potentially figuring out what we're doing with communications, community relations and Cable 15. I don't know where you're at on this, and I'm curious, and maybe I'll shoot this over to council president, maybe some sort of ad hoc committee to assess the communications in the city, to improve the communications in the city? I think, you know, with two departments that are rather strong in Southfield, and if they're going to be working closer together, I'd like, I personally would love to be involved in that discussion and bringing on, you know, how do we have more of a multimedia department rather than just traditional communications? So, you know, obviously, as council president, I'll leave it to your discretion, but maybe an ad hoc committee or some sort of further discussion, rather than just resting it solely on Fred's shoulders to find some sort of solution here. I think that those who are interested, it would be worth having at the table for that discussion.
Will you give us some thought?
Sounds good.
Okay, listen a moment.
Oh, yeah. The water and sewer, when that report came out, when they were in here talking about all these areas and what they cost, and what the conditions were, and they graded them, remember that? That's me. Section 24 was mentioned, because you've got to combine sewer overflow, you have all those base and switch to a vacuum. That was one of, I thought, one of the worst cases, and I don't see it on the board.
The, this budget deals with the next year, that actually looked at almost 50 million dollars' worth of work, and that was a future year. Our thought process is to develop almost a three or a five-year capital plan. It's partly driven by, we have this large cash reserve now doing something, but the money's fairly inexpensive, knowing that the bonds we have in place for the west end of the city are going to fall off in a few years, and maybe we structure almost a 50 to 75 million dollar capital investment in water and sewer. Section 24 is part of that, but I would need to grab my book, and I'm not sure if it's for next, the next fiscal year. for next, the next fiscal year or the following.
I, I don't remember either, but it was one of the worst, one of the worst decided, and it is still going into the combined sewers, not separated. So that's not a good thing. I would, I would like to hear something about that.
Okay.
Mr. Fraser?
Yeah, I have several comments. One is, we have talked about in the past, updating the P and R rooms, painting, upgrading. I didn't see that anywhere in here. I know we talked about it, but, I mean, it's pretty dreary looking over there. The second is the Pavilion. The Pavilion is probably one of the key things in this campus where we could have revenue, I mean, to the point where, maybe we got signed on 696, you know, that points folks to the Pavilion. But I think we need to make that sparkle, so that people, more people will want, like to rent it, so we can have some more revenue.
I could find you a hundred thousand dollars in new carpet.
Yeah, right.
From the Evergreen Road.
That's right. Each year, it seems like we get a request to update the TPS, new, new things, I don't see that anyplace in here. And I don't know if that's been talked about yet or not, but...
I could tell you, it did not come up in the budget process, and I, and we met with every department head, not to say that as we go through some of these other investments, it could happen.
Okay. And it seems to me it was always a fairly significant cost to...
Let me make this statement, there is some regarding Parks and Rec and Pavilion. We have cost estimates of about 1.7 million dollars in ADA improvements to this campus, as well as another million dollars in ADA improvements to the Beachwood Center. The ADA improvements for this campus would include Parks and Rec staff, you know, eventually vacating some of their space and turning Mr. Blox, and the other office just to the west, into restrooms, whatever, something along the lines of what you're seeing in the west end.
I know you mentioned that before.
Yep, the other part of, of the Berg visit was the kitchen tour, and we are bringing a entity in to evaluate the kitchen at the Berg as well as Room 115, to see what else we could do. I am, the thought process on the ADA is there's a substantial amount in our CEDG block rent money, there, and we're also having a dialogue with HUD about doing what's called a Section 108 loan, that we would borrow against our future allocations to address these ADA items which are block rent eligible. The Southfield nonprofit is waiting to hear the status on its mishta financing, if they are successful with their tax credits, and I really believe they've got outstanding applications and how they explore, that the senior center will be relocating. I'm hoping that the relocation of that senior center is an opportunity to address from curtains to wow, any other treatment, and maybe even some of the exterior, just creating a stronger wow statement there. But the thought process, maybe if that happens, facility, and this would be a budget amendment, would be shutting the building down in August, November, and working to deal with the asbestos items in there, and the renovation, and reopen the first of 2015.
Also, prior to the economy taking a note, guys, we had talked about a water park over at Beachwoods, and, because when the, when the economy went down, so did the, you know, discussion of the water park.
I, 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 here's what I...
Splash pads, yeah.
On the Beachwood, the splash pad, there was an issue, and it was recently discussed in the last six weeks with the Water Resource Commission, about a water supply system for that splash pad, so we wouldn't have the operational cost as well as irrigating our golf courses, and would the county allow us to put a well in? And that was one of the discussions. I know there was preliminary work done on the design of the splash pad, it just did not move forward, and we could certainly review that if that's the desired response.
No, we used to have a swimming pool over there, so there's got to be water.
Well, there's, there's water, but can we defer the cost of having to purchase water for a splash pad? And what that would do for the golf courses operationally, from watering them as well as the pad? And I could tell you the Water Resource folks were open to the dialogue.
Now, you may or may not have ever heard this discussion, but this is something that periodically comes up. Radio station 1700, are you familiar with that? Good.
Uh, is it, are you talking our cable radios?
Yes.
Yeah, Lisa's...
Yeah, that, you can probably hear it about block away from you. And it's supposed to be a, it's supposed to be an emergency radio station. And so when emergencies happen in the, the city, people are supposed to tune to that, which I don't think anybody does. They go to WJR, they go to, to radio, main station, and I don't even know if Frank is still making his announcements on there all the time to let us know that the radio's still on the air. But you can't hear it all over the city, I mean, it's, it's, the value is very questionable at best, whether or not it should continue that. And if we're spending money on that, I don't know, I mean, that's something that we ought to have, we ought to take a look at. And it might be somebody's pet project, but if it's, if it's 12, if it's Evergreen and between 12 and 13, another project, maybe we ought to take a look at it.
I'll, I'll offer this statement, we actually have people in Public Works and Police and Fire evaluating our radio and communication systems. There are some issues that are coming down the pike, and I'm just wondering if there's a way to dovetail enhancing our communication with some of the investment that's going to have to be made. With the feds changing the broadband with, Elder Jensen's been real critical working with us there, we're doing little things like mapping out all of our existing infrastructure, but we know in the next two years there's going to be a support issue in Motorola, and that issue will be in front of City Council.
Okay. And the last comment that I have is, I'm going to direct it toward our Council President, and that is, we've always had administrator and a deputy administrator. We need to do something about that. And we need to, as a council, we need to some discuss where do we want to go, so, because Fred's going to work himself in the same situation that Jim was in if he keeps trying to carry everything, carries the whole team on his back.
I, I got, I got great people around me.
So Jim?
Pierce, a lot, a lot, a lot of our, a lot of our staff, and constantly engaging and employing them, and exciting them about the opportunities here as well.
Yeah.
I could believe you have like a question on that.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, Mr. May.
Because that's just so long, I forgot. Oh, yes, I know. But, you know, all right, I'll, I'll add it. I wanted to know possibly the total fund balances of every department.
The latest fund balances of every department?
Total of everything.
The closest we've probably did is what Mr. Pierce gave you today.
I'm going out for a second.
All right, I'm happy to sit down with you and go through, through with that.
Fred?
Fred?
All right.
Okay? If you look at our expenditure levels and where we end, oh.
Most, most of the funds of the, of the different departments actually are part of the general fund. The only dedicated separate funds would be Parks and Recreation, would be the Water Department, Ark Street and Highway, Ark Street and, and so there's only a handful of independent funds, otherwise, most of the departments that you see in this booklet, for example, are all going to be under the same.
That handful, that handful, I want the total, but that handful.
Oh, okay, here, I'll look at it.
Right at the entrance off the color glass, though, that has to be looked at, even if it's shaved and put down, an inch and a half of asphalt there, it has to really be on that.
Where, road or...
There's an island that divides the in and out, to come out of there, you're almost, people are, you're almost on the curb side. And the other thing I want to check on is that part of the site plan for, for the auto department is, is to maintain that island as part of their landscaping.
The auto zone, what you speak, Big Boy?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the other thing I wanted to ask, well, actually, two things. One, the decision that council had to make, we're putting ten thousand dollars into the Code House, that is designated as historical, and this thing come up several times, why does the city really need it? And in having owned the bottle house, you know, it is maintained really pretty, and it's owned through, with three different owners, and I don't know, you know, what we could do. Is it rented out now? No, it is, it is empty, there has been just some discussion about how can, you know, how, can we rent it out, lease it out, do a ground, do something, and preserve through deed restriction the historical significance of the property? Can we come up with, you know, there might be a position group, a, a, a group of lawyers who might be excited about a project like that, and we, we could protect the city's safeguard, we safeguard our interest through a deed restriction, and we'd like to explore that the, the next year. Code House, the former fire station on 9 Mile, John Gray's, Parks House, there goes, we need to come up with strategies on. When looking at all the properties, you know, we just said that, that down south where we had a, a right of way, and we found out we owned the property. And we've got seven all, all across the street and square that we own, in the middle of city center, it just sits there, you know, that, you didn't get anything? There's nothing that clicks, huh?
Much more than that, you know, I asked for this last year, we should be putting, getting a willator and put all these properties, these vacant lots, we're mowing them, put them back into somebody else's hands and collect taxes on them.
Yeah, well, you know, they have to, the priority, why do we need them? And if we don't need them, you know, why would we maintain them? I mean, I just said, said to give them that right of way down, said, I haven't told them, why don't you buy it? Okay, what you give us, give us ten thousand dollars and own it, you know, at least we don't have to, you know, something, you happen on that, and we get hurt on that, you don't even need to let the, what's happening with Larry Thompson funds?
We are waiting for the foundation, there are funds that are to be transferred.
Yeah.
For the amount there, but we also have a council...
Two hundred fifty-two, two hundred fifty-two thousand.
We've, we've not seen any of the funds that, there's a, a short list of funds that need to be transferred from the foundation back to the city, we've not seen those funds. We do have a council item that's prepared to put, spend some of that money at the Thompson Farm and dealing with some maintenance issues instead of those coming out of Parks and Rec. I think that's like a forty, just under fifty thousand dollar requested expenditure, but I've been holding off on bringing it to council until we actually receive the funds.
Yeah, this thing really done not as long time.
It's been two and a half months.
Since we had a meeting with the foundation, we had made a decision, we weren't going to go to that route, so it should be, the decision should have been made and the test should have taken place. I mean, we need the money, you know, two hundred fifty-two thousand, we can take care of Evergreen Road.
All right. Okay, so we do need to schedule another meeting.
Lisa, Lisa Martin.
Yeah, so the chair, just wanted to bring up Mr. Fraser, we've been talking with, oh, excuse me, to Mr. Johns about the radio station. Right now, the radio station isn't costing any money, but we spoke to them and we talked to a, a dealer, they said we need an amplifier and an upgrade to the system, so we were going to purchase that in a new budget year for under five thousand dollars, as well as work a lot of the stuff that Mr. Doran described. So we, we were saying the same thing, you can't hear it, but it needs an amplification and a couple of other software features that we don't have now, so we're going to plan that for the new budget.
Needs a new medical.
It does.
Why is that, Fred?
Yeah.
What happened with the blackout, there was noise but no picture?
Comcast went down that day, and we were on the phone constantly, I was directing down the...
It wasn't our, our...
No, no, it was Comcast, but, but we assured the people on the phone, and we did, we got the meeting in total, we put it on the next day.
Lisa said that.
Yeah, yeah.
I can't get Channel 15 many a time. The signal comes in and it, I just can't get it.
Give me your phone number and I'll call up Comcast to see, or you have Comcast, right?
Yeah.
I'll call, call up to see if we can do, because we are up late.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Another thing, Chair, Fred, somewhere, someplace, and we're saving some money, I, I know that isn't the council request, and we, Jim cut it out of that, of that cable fund, but we've got to get a bigger table here. When you get this many papers up here, it gets very difficult, pussy in the corners.
A crack?
Yeah, pardon?
There's a crack in it right here.
Well, yeah, well, they'll probably fill that up, it's hanging over it.
Asshole, isn't it?
Don't bet you, they're kind of even a podworm come over here.
All right, okay, you got to choose your next item.
I don't have a phone, can I?
Yeah.
Light, uh...
No, I'm not, I'm...
I just want the light that's still...
Next, I'll be, I'll do it with my face.
I'm taking it up, maybe I can get it.
I don't think, the, uh, the council...
Mayor of President, the council, you may recall, Rizzo had originally submitted, we had originally thought about putting a solid waste tran, transport location in Southfield. We thought that, they have backed off, but they have an agreement with the city of Pontiac to locate a transfer facility at the former Pontiac Bureau position, and the statute requires that two-thirds of the community, or no less than sixty-seven percent of the local units of government must support the amendment to the county's solid waste plan. And this is South...
In one of those?
Well, it's not in Southfield, it's in, it's in Pontiac. The city of Pontiac has come to an agreement that they want it, the site is...
How is that a help?
We have, as a community and the county, we have a vote in the county, on the county's solid waste plan. And they're proposing the, the amendment, Pontiac has occurred to it, incurred with it, the PPS that was formerly owned by the, the entity handling the disposition of general mortgage assets, was used as an automotive facility for years, a transfer facility above ground, nothing buried, done within contained environment that's accessible to the city of Pontiac, they're, they're at, the city of Pontiac and the county are asking to support this amendment.
I want to make sure that, you know, when they were talking here, it's very good enough that they, the site plan and some of the renderings, I'd like to make sure, it's still open county, Vernon County, that they put as nice a place that they can, in other words, they have landscaping, Thomas landscaping and all those things, and here, I don't want them to be taking a plant over that if it becomes something other than, something that is, and Pontiac doesn't need any more driving... other, something other than, something that is, Pontiac doesn't need anymore driving, you know? Mr. Hens is doing, holding is doing nice job, he's taking out five hundred homes in Pontiac. And, uh, that, you know, they throw them out of Detroit, so we both flip them on.
Any other comments, council, relating to this matter? So you looking for a, give this-
I was supposed to say that in the nineteen-
You, are you recommending way of closing it?
Uh, we are recommending that it be approved, yes.
We are. And without the opti, we will move it to the May twelfth, uh, January.
And every today.
Oh, May eighteenth, that's right. Okay, let's move to the public hearing.
There's a question. Um, this is Borg has indicated possibly a June second.
I want to discuss it.
Okay, okay. I know who should put on the next meeting.
Okay. Um, let's move to the public comment. Let me have three more.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four zero three seven dash zero AM five five. For the residents that are listening to this meeting via YouTube, I can be reached at two four eight three four six zero four three nine. As your independent voice, I am just a phone call away or a click away via email. The Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act was passed in nineteen seventy-six in the state of Michigan, which banned discrimination, and most of you are familiar with that. Raised color, creed, national origin, uh, gender, but it doesn't include sexual orientation. Thirty cities within the state of Michigan have enacted an amendment to the Elliot Larson Act in their own community. Some of those communities are as follows: Detroit, Lansing, Grand Rapids, Traverse City, Kalamazoo, Royal Oak, and earlier this year, Laker Village did it. Since Southfield hasn't adopted their version of an amendment, you can leave Laker Village and come right to Southfield and be discriminated against. I think the city attorney is in the process of drafting language, which is good, if that's the case. But just let me remind all of you sitting at this table that Southfield is the all-American city, the center of it all. Southfield also received an award and was recognized by a real estate website, Estus, as the most diverse community in the state of Michigan. If this city wants to continue that trend and live up to all the accolades it has received for diversity, we must adopt an amendment in this city. As individuals, we may not agree with such a lifestyle. It may be against your religious beliefs, but we cannot judge, and we cannot put our personal opinions in it. We have to do what's right to keep that trend of diversity going on. So council, you have got to immediately resolve this matter. And Mr. Land, I would like to thank you, uh, because you inspired us to start the Southfield Citizens Oversight Coalition. I have some minutes here from May sixteenth of two thousand and eleven, where you basically said that, um, that the city has got to respond to better investment goals and oversight. You also went a step further and said that many years ago, the city had some bad investments, and it was due to a lack of oversight. So we heard you loud and clear, uh, clear, and we were honored and humbled to respond to your, uh, request by starting this oversight committee. And I'd like to challenge every person at this table to stop using the expression "more with less," as Plant Moran said. You can see, less causes stress, and it stretches people too thin. Thank you.
Madam President, my name is Gerard Muller. My address is Post Office Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. I have a question I'd like to ask this council. How can a person submit a request for recognition to speak at a council meeting when the council meeting itself has been scheduled after the sign-up period for speaking? For example, last April twenty-eighth, on a Monday, I was precluded from speaking during the communications portion of the agenda at the COW. Thus, this council inadvertently violated the Open Meetings Act, PA two sixty-seven of nineteen seventy-six, section three, subsection five. And I quote, "A person shall be permitted to address a meeting of a public body under rules established and recorded by the public body." Unquote. Under council's current rules that were established and recorded by this body, there was no possible way for me to submit a request for recognition since the Wednesday deadline occurred two days prior to Friday's announcement scheduling the COW three days henceforth for the following Monday, April twenty-eighth. Obviously, council needs to revisit and reestablish and re-record their rules. Otherwise, this council will continue to be noncompliant. A simple solution to this dilemma is to waiver the sign-up requirement when the meeting that is to be scheduled is less than seven days away. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Okay, well, if I've been hearing the items brought to the table, Mr. Muller.
Uh, this is something that I think we brought to the table before, that the state of our post office here in Southfield, I don't know if anyone's been in there recently, but it is understaffed. I, I, I don't know what we can do as a body, but when we went to the National League of Cities, me and Myron and Ken sat down with Carl Levin, uh, in the, in the Senate Office Building, and brought to his attention, we have a mail delivery problem. But even going in there, it is understaffed. I, I'm there frequently now, and I hear residents standing there saying they've never seen it like this.
Sure.
The line is out the door. What can we do as a city to, I mean, maybe this is a legislative committee issue, to talk to our federal officials and say, there needs to be more support? Isn't there a new postmaster? I, the clerk would might know better.
Well, and there's been several new postmasters, and just recently, um, I have elevated our complaint, we have a big mailing coming out with the voter ID cards, and I was concerned, where do I take the mail? How can I be sure it's going to be mailed out? And, um, spent a lot of time with the manager in Royal Oak, who promised and assured me someone from Southwood would get gas, and I've talked about them, and to date, we still have not heard gas come anyway. I've gone over there personally, talked, tried to talk, and they just basically have said, good luck.
It's horrible. I don't know what we can do.
I don't, anything we can do at the next level, I think we need to elevate it.
When we talked to Carl Levin, he said, contact my Detroit staff. I did that. I, I, I announced it at the council meeting, several of the residents contacted me, and said they're having the same problem in their neighborhood with missing days of delivery. Um, our neighborhood is, or my neighborhood is better now, but, I mean, we went sometimes only two deliveries in a week. Um, and almost every week, we, we had five days, not six days delivery. So I worked with the Carl Levin staff, and I heard nothing about it.
Can you go to Chinese?
Yes. Um, I will bring in, the way that the structure of the postal service is, there is a, there are postmasters in individual cities, and then there's a manager that, that handles that. I personally called, um, because of the complaints and personal experience, the previous postmaster that was there, they were very much aware of her shortcomings. Uh, Royal Oak has nothing to do with, um, Southfield, so it's the manager in Detroit. Uh, I would like to invite him to come out and to our meeting, and ask him to adopt his body and his, so that he can have a sense of it, and if it's okay with, uh, you know, what I'm saying about people.
Yeah, I think that's, because every time I'm in there, um, you know, I, I'm hoping that, and I've gone at different times of day just to kind of check it out, from nine o'clock in the morning until six o'clock in the evening.
They have, they have gone to a hiring freeze as well.
Yeah.
And clerks are, the clerks are the ones that's trained to handle the windows, and, um, you know, I got this whole story, but the customer service is not like that.
It is. Yeah, so I would love to see that on a future agenda, because it's terrible. And it, and, and Southfield's getting a reputation for a bad post office. There are other people waiting in line saying they've never seen anywhere else like this except for Southfield's post office.
Believe me, there are. Believe me.
I, I asked, recently, I asked one of the clerks a question about fights. I see a, the posters, the friends went up to ask, why is this? So he says, you don't tell me how to work my job, or do my job? I didn't want to fight with him.
You don't want to fight with him?
No. I just asked him why it went up so much.
I don't think they have an attitude. I go to Royal Oak and I can, it's much nicer.
I agree with you.
Yeah, it's nicer.
I don't know if anybody responded, because this is in our package.
Yeah.
About fire pits.
Yeah, I just thought, I was going to ask about that. Do we have an ordinance on what you can burn in a fire pit?
No, I think you, uh, I think you, most, I think there's a provision you can get to the fire chief and get a permit for a special, but just in general, I don't think you can fire.
Yeah, you can have.
Is illegal.
Yeah.
With the metal things.
They, they put your yard to have.
Right, but I don't know that those are sanctioned by our ordinances. I think-
Is this something we can refer to code? They're burning stuff, um, other than-
But they're not supposed to burn anything.
Right.
They're burning garbage.
What are they burning?
Well, they're not burning charcoal.
The thing is, we aren't supposed to have fire pits anyhow. Charcoal or not? I know people have my pantyhose, retard.
Yeah, I have those, I have one myself. Kids are warm, they don't want to get cool night, want to sit out in your patio.
I got a fire pit in my patio that has a great big flower in it.
Now you need to get a gas one. Here's a hook of gas for you, yeah, right? Definition.
Okay, we've got a lot of messages we're going to make a referral to our council.
Yeah, let me get a letter on that, uh, person who said that, that, uh, that, that people were living in a house.
Yeah.
Did, did they send that to somebody? Did that refer to anybody?
Living in a-
Yeah, it, it's, uh, you know.
I got the party house.
Yeah, you're talking about the party house?
No, no, this one is-
Like a squatter?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I saw that. Okay, as well, okay. All right. Go with the in hand.
I just want to comment on the party house, because I did follow up, and I talked to, uh, Mr. Miller. The person wants to have parties, and what, what he does, he has them a lot. He, we can tick it. If he doesn't have noise, and what I understand, it's the people coming and going that's the noise, it's not from his house. So people are getting in and out of the car. They can tick it after two o'clock, but until that point, there is no ordinance to stop someone if they want to have a party at night. Um, he said he's recently divorced, and he's having a good time. So he wants to have parties. So the only issue that came up is that he has so many people at these parties, and there's parking on both sides of the street, and it's got to be a hindrance for our emergency vehicles. But there's nothing to say you can't park on both sides of the street. So it's, you know, and one of the person that complains that who has parties to two o'clock in the morning anyway? She's an older, very conservative person who just thinks having a party at two in the morning is unacceptable. But it's the people, it's not the house. So he's not booming the music, it's, it's the noise.
Because he want to have the people, they, what's the difference in noise?
But you can't, we can't tell people not to entertain.
He complained about barking dog, that's even worse, if he got, I used to have a neighbor like that, and he had that record thing going, and boombox going, and, and, you know, too we pass ordinance, I have boomboxes.
We have, we have ordinance and our noise, absolutely. But you're saying the noise that comes from the party issues is people-
The people getting out the car, coming and going, being loud, talking, going to the curb. And I feel for the residents.
You know, and after they drink, after they drink it a little bit, and they get all that noise and that, and it, I mean, I had that situation, they finally, they were renting his house, he finally get down, and he bought it, he's, he's, um, he's, he's a educator, I think he's a chemist or something.
A chemist. I figured out breaking bad, what's going on in there?
Hopefully he'll calm down, but maybe he'll kind of chill out after.
Well, the city department go every time they get a call, go through the door, say you're creating a nuisance pretty soon. Yeah, he'll get them.
And that's what the chief said he was going, they were going to be stepping up, uh, patrol and stepping up.
If it's a parking, they could have traffic control, but a parking lot on one side is-
Right, you could do that. If, if we're finding it, we can't get a vehicle, emergency vehicle, we could do, we can have the horse and go on.
And that's what he does, the detective who does, that was his major concern, because if a car was coming this way, you can't get through.
They couldn't pass each other.
We should look at it.
Good suggestion, Mr. Fraser. Got two offers on it, all the list they raise.
If they give me an offer, we head in line and sell it.
Have we sold, uh, how many more we got on the market?
I-
Oh, I, someone was told that there's no waiting list, there's no more people being accepted, and to-
We, we're, you buy, what we have, you go to a realtor, and as they, as they're prepared, you, you bid on them and offer. And when you create a waiting list, HUD will tell you, you have to exhaust the people that are on the waiting list. So if there's a house that they, someone's looking at, you know, for example, Virginia, we have two, two offers on it right now, they're both above the appraisal, Antucket has three.
But they still have to be qualified, so how do they qualify them now?
Well, they, they work with the realtor, then we, we confirm their qualifications prior to closing. What about the Melrose house? Pardon? People are asking me about the house on Melrose. Uh, I think we've closed on it. We think one thirty-one. Uh, there's one we're demolishing.
Right, I can't remember if that's-
No, this is- This is the one closest to Southfield, Jerry? You better not demolish this one, it's totally rehabbed.
Isn't this the one we just picked up?
No, uh, no, we, we closed on the Melrose house. Okay. It's sold. The demolishing, I hope, is the one on the corner of Southfield, and-
With the tarp on the Melrose.
No. The blue tarp that's now split. According, according to Jerry, uh, he and I just talked about it, there's a, a fire, they, they claim they're going to be redoing it. I'll revisit the item, it's had the tarp on it for six months. More than six months. And the part, the tarp is now split. Okay. We have another house on Melrose that's a demo, and then, uh, let's see, was there an offer on Melrose? You have one on, on, uh, Cornell, uh, Cornell that hasn't been lived in in twenty years. Uh, that's full of mold.
We don't have an SP on Cornell.
No, 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 this is not an SP.
Oh, just a vacant house?
I got a, a message from, uh, Carrie about a demo on Cornell last, the house full of mold.
Oh.
That's what it's going to say?
Yeah.
So he's moving forward with a, with a wider structure?
Yeah. A guy lives in Kentucky, never came back. But paid the taxes.
He pays?
The house next to me is foreclosed about, uh, a month ago. There seems to be a lot of activity, except the woman that, when she was moving out, I was talking with him, she said that in the wintertime, pipes in the basement room, and she got mold in the basement, so I don't know, people know about it.
That could be removed.
Sure, if it, we brought, just in the basement, that's-
Yeah, well, we've done that on probably twenty-five percent of homes, a lot of them.
Yeah.